All right, Mr. Vignani, you're all set. Have a good final meeting. It was a pleasure.
I'm just set. Good evening, everybody. It is May 9th, 6:30, and I am going to call the Select Board meeting to order and ask for the acceptance of the agenda. Second by Mr. Dugrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Before we get this started, I just have a something I'd like to read. The Citrus Select Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all of our districts, including marginalized and minorityized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask the community members and all of our districts to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Thank you. With that, I will turn it over to Andrew.
I'll take it over for now. So for those of you who don't know, today's our esteemed colleague, Tony Vignani's, final meeting. And there's a few things you want to tell.
Oh my God. Look at that.
That must...
Yeah, can you see that?
Next slide. So there's a few things you wanted to do. I have to go through and highlight some of the accomplishments, the numerous accomplishments that the chair has done his last 15 years on the board. As many of you know, he's been chairman four times. But more than anything, it's his fiscal acumen and being a fiscal hawk that so many of us will always know and remember. He's been on more boards than I think I've contracted. But let me go through, starting back in 2008, and I will be as brief as I can, but it is quite a college. So rookie, starting off, first with the Citrus Marines Army work beginning. Elderly Housing Study approved, looking at elderly housing at Central Park. Drift by North River Public Access approved. Started and helped implement the Homarock Overlay District. Town adopts a stormwater trial law and a sex offender registry bylaw law approved at town meeting. Next year, TA steps down and UTA search begins. New town administrator is hired, the wind power lease agreement is signed, and we're now, Citrus has been designated as one of 31 marine communities. 2010, the purchase of Pier 44, formation of the Economic Development Committee, construction of a new cable studio at the high school, implemented a new capital budget process that has still been used today for us to prioritize for years to come. Made changes to the town beach funding to make sure that lifeguards, beaches, and there's now 13 years ago, online registration. Implemented an aggressive marketing campaign with the greatest golf courses in the South Shore, Woodas Water. 2011, appointed a new IT director. Reorganized Veterans Services to help provide better services for our veterans. Reserves for unexpected weather events, again, thinking ahead, putting money away. Infrastructure improvements, again, established a new Veterans Advisory Council 2012. New Facilities Director position was created and filled. Town meeting approved six million in town energy services improvements. Town receiving four boards for clean energy. Moving on, 2013, the completion of a solar array, capital landfill. Accelerated the plan to develop and repair water main infrastructure. Strategic planning informed to identify infrastructure concerns, and the list goes on and on. Fast forward. Opening a new public safety complex, reopened the library at Branch Street, opened the new Gates Middle School. Yet another TA search. Community Preservation Act, town meeting for the final person for First Cliff, now known as 23 Sunset. In 2019, we got to 22 miles now of new construction of new water pumps. New athletic fields, relocated food pantry, new Homarock fire station. And again, 2022, Woodas Water renovation. Never mind the new establishments of other boards and committees and sister cities. And as of today, the one thing that we do know is that year after year, the town has never been in better financial shape than in the past decade. Going through a pandemic, coming out with the plan, and the person who did the spreadsheet for the financial forecast model to make sure that we have a structural surplus, that person who always knew and understood every dollar is the people's dollar, their tax dollars, that we have to always, always be cognizant of how that money is spent. And it's a career spent of forward thoughts and understanding to use that money wisely. And it's been an honor to sit next to your losers. I know some of our colleagues definitely want to change, so I would like to do that.
Again, I'll go last.
Yeah, all right.
Let's make it four.
14 pages, oh. I will make it quick. Andrew touched on a number of things that I would have highlighted, but I will say that my grandfather always told me that we measure people from the neck up for all these reasons, because we're all small people in my family, but I would have been then to say we measure people from the heart up. And you have, for all these years, not only used your head to keep the ship straight, you used your heart to represent the community in the best way that you possibly could. And for that, I am honored to serve with you. I've learned a lot from him. I know that, you know, even when we disagree, I've learned both those from you, and I hope I can, you know, carry on your torch for a while, and that won't be far. And I have hand full papers. But thank you for your long service to the town.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to say on a personal note that I've known Tony since we moved into our neighborhood 28 years ago, and he had a young family, and they were right up against our yard. And his tiny children used to make the trip over to Mrs. Conley's house. So I've known Tony for a very long time. And I will say, if I can get a message through to everyone tonight, it is that you can do it if you're a young person, and who's a young person then? He's still young now, with a young family, that if you really want to do something, you can do it. And he's made, I know, with Ann, so many sacrifices over the years of having to be here every other Tuesday night, and that's just the tip of the iceberg. We all have liaison jobs as select people, so you have other meetings you have to go to. You have ceremonies you have to attend. You represent the town when things aren't going well with storms, you know. So all I can say is, Tony, thank you, thank you for your personal sacrifice. And Ann and family, thank you very much. And if you're listening out there, Tony, we need more young people, right?
We do.
So thank you very much for your service to the town.
Well, I really don't have anything good to say. Tony, I miss you. I really will. You know, in fact, we started advisory, I think we overlapped a couple of years back then, and that was when I first, as you mentioned, really learned of Tony's financial ethic and really learned a lot from you, especially through advisory. And then when I decided to run here for this board, I was honored to be able to sit beside you for the last 10 years, which is a kindness to me as well. Next year, you've always approached everyone in a fair way, in a thoughtful way, and in a respectful way. And that's something that you taught me. And to build on the words of Karen Camp, I think the biggest thing that I learned over the years is the heart, and you're really a good man. You're really a good man, and sometimes that doesn't come through when you're making difficult decisions on behalf of the town. So thank you for that. But on a lighter note, I don't think any of you know what a great doodler Tony is. So we probably would have captured the last 11 years with all the doodling that he does, through some of the long presentations that we do have to go through. So I always loved sitting next to him and watching his little doodles, and he's a very good artist. So that may be his next career. It might be. I just want to say thank you for everything that you taught us, and thank you for being such a great leader. We really served such a really important place. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we have a formal proclamation to be made. On behalf of the town's employees and the board of selectmen, we are gathered this evening to recognize an art 15 years of dedicated service to the town of Citrus. By whereas, Mr. Vignani, did I say that right? See? Okay, took me wrong here. Mr. Vignani first became a selectman in 2008, serving on the board with distinction for 15 years. He was elected to the board with Richard W. Murray, John Fannig, Sean Harris, and Joseph P. Norton. Mr. Vignani served as chair of the board in 2011, 2015, 2019, and 2022. Whereas the town of Citrus has seen great change during the past 15 years. To more to mention all of them, he represented the board on the Financial Forecast Committee, serving as a chair, working with the team to strengthen fiduciary responsibility in town government. Mr. Vignani prioritized long-range facility capital and infrastructure needs. He maintained and applied a broad understanding of financial management principles to ensure decisions were fiscally sound and responsible. For over a decade, the town of Citrus has maintained a AA+ bond rating by the Standard and Poor's Global Rating System. And whereas while on the board, Mr. Vignani has served as a liaison to the Beach Commission, Uppification Commission, Capital Planning Committee, Plymouth County Advisory Board, School Committee, Street Acceptance Committee, Recreation Commission, South Shore Coalition, Community Preservation Committee, Veterans Services Advisory Council Advisory Committee, Commissions on Disabilities, Sister City Committee, Finance, Oh, for France, Ireland, and Cape Verde, Woodas Water Golf Committee, Shellfish Advisory Committee, Council on Economic Development Committee, according to the information, Mr. Vignani served on the advisory board for six years from 2002 to 2008, prior to being elected to the select board in 2008. Therefore, be it resolved that Anthony B. Vignani, accept this resolution with the resounding thanks and appreciation of the select board and the entire town of Citrus. Your long tenure as a member of a select board has benefited our community in countless ways for many years to come.
Well, thank you all very much. That list that Andrew read, I have very good credit for many of those things. It's always been a team effort, the names that Warren mentioned, starting with Rick and John and Sean, who's probably one of the hardest working selectmen there was, and then, of course, my mentor, Joe Roy. Proud of all the stuff we've done. We've done a lot of positive things here, and again, didn't know it at all. I think the biggest thing that I enjoyed in this job, well, not job, I had a full-time job the whole time, and that kind of meeting, a little bit different than others, because I didn't have the time to spend at town hall a lot, because I was always working, and somebody mentioned rushing into meetings as I'm about to start. But I met so many people, and that's really the strength of the community. And whether it's people that you meet with their initiatives or on committees that are involved, and mostly town hall people as well, those are the people that get things better in this town. You know, the residents and the town hall employees. And I look around, I see Jim, Pam, and Nick, and Murph, and just Kevin, and everybody that I've worked so closely with over the years. And you guys are the ones that do the work. We sit up here and we talk about stuff, but we throw it down to you guys, and you guys get it done. And that's why we have such great talent, is because we have such great employees. So thank you all. Those are the relationships and the interactions that I will miss. And then, of course, the four, the five of us, the four of you, we've had a great working relationship. I think of you as friends more than, more than peers. We haven't always agreed on everything, but we've always handled it in a, in a manner that we could get to the next meeting and still look at each other in the eye and go on. I think all the select board members that I've worked with have just had a true passion for the town. You know, they love the town, and they want to do what's right. And you hear all this sort of stuff going on in the background, you know, it frankly just doesn't happen. And everybody that works here and on these committees and other committees just dedicate their time and energy to bring things, to make this town such a great place. You mentioned I had three town administrators. We started with Rick Agnew, and then moved to Tricia Van Kezey. The change that we made from, I think, of Rick, where we didn't have any processes or systems or spreadsheets or anything in place, to Tricia that came in and really got some stuff organized. And then we hired Jim, who was between the two, where he had, you know, the process and the, you know, the personal skills to get everything done. I think we've just been very fortunate with other people. I see Nancy sitting next to you. You were the godset, you know, you came in here and really just really tightened all the stuff that we needed to make sure that the town was really right. And you did that great, all the awards show, all that sort of. The true people that make us look good are Michelle, Lorraine, Kim, and Sheila before them. They deal with all the complaints and forward them to us, and they get all these packets ready for us, and they tell us what's really going on with the stuff. Without you guys, we're just stiff fingers up here. So thank you both for all, all of what you've done there. Because I could go on, I'm sure I'm forgetting people. But I will say, when you get elected to this position, you don't just elect the person. You kind of elect their family, whether they want it or they don't want it. I see my wife in the back there. Many times she didn't want it. So I want to thank you for going on the slide with me. Most of the time it was fun, some times it was, some times not. But she was, you know, she was a great sounding board. She was another set of eyes and ears out there in the town that kind of kept me informed of what was going on and really loves the town as much as I do. So you're not only losing me, but you're losing her as well. So thank you for that. And I enjoyed it. You know, I really did enjoy it, and I know that you're in great hands. The four people around me are just so competent of new ideas and such dedication to government and just passion for the town. I think you're in great hands, and Susan's going to do a great job as well. So you won't skip me not being here. So thank you for everything. Thank you for these gifts and proclamation and, you know, everything else. And then, thank you. So we'll get on with the meeting and go on. Thank you for stopping, you guys. The next thing in the meeting is walking. So are there any walkings this evening? All right. We'll move right on to the report of the town this week.
Evening. I'd also like to thank you, Tony, for your support, my hard work, or the future, yeah, my sometimes twisted sense of you, so I appreciate that. The life, please, don't be a stranger. Maybe I'll say what I was expecting in the course. So we put in the town administrator for today. As always, we start with our water update. We're in good shape right now. The reservoirs are plus three. That's up two inches from last week. Tech factory water is up, plus three, up from 1.75. Average jail of demand was 1.209 million gallons a day, which is fairly close to last week's 1.234. Rainfall over the last seven days is 1.35. The water problem is still flushing this week. We do have water. Wheel of Rock is done. It'll be in the third areas later this week. Reminding the people, we are under our annual water restrictions. They started making, between May 1st and September 30th, all outdoor water must occur before 9:00 a.m. and after 5:00 p.m. Automatic irrigation systems may be used one day per week based on voting precincts. As we said before, this plan is proposed by the state based on the Houston Aquifer District. It's not particularly situative. Any questions about your water regaters? Please go to town water website. If you're water pop, you get that information. We do have an update on the progress of the water treatment plant. We've been meeting regularly with our consultants, working on the design and trying to get it submitted. We recently submitted what's called an environmental notification form to the Mass Environmental Policy Act Office, MIPA. This permit provides preliminary information on stormwater site layout, stravagant facts, climate resiliency. The MIPA office will use this information on the permit to determine the potential environmental impacts of the building and the operation of the plant. We are still working on the design of the plant. The reason we filed the permit at this point is it includes the water mains on Route 3A that we're working on, so we want to get that permit application in. If you're interested, you can go online and see that permit and make comments. Various aspects of the project's design were incorporated to bolster resiliency and climate change adaptation. The project has always outlined many changes to geography and the flood plain, and there is still a planning board and conservation commission reviews coming up, so people will have additional opportunities for public comment. We are sticking to what the board has directed us, and we're working to minimize impact on the abutters. We are looking to minimize the development footprint. To that end, we have actually reduced the building footprint by several thousand square feet from the preliminary design that the board has seen, and we will continue to reform that as we go along. We expect a MIPA review to last approximately 30 days. And when other opportunities for public input, particularly planning and conservation, we will let people know. Once we get a little bit further, next week, we have a meeting, and then we'll be scheduled meetings with probably Mr. Dugrich, who's our representative, representative of the planning board of conservation. We kind of give them a preliminary update where we are on the project. But right now, we have filed MIPA. People should know it is preliminary, but they can't comment on what they see at this point. Another project, Cold Poppy Marina, is substantially completed. You can see how the fencing is gone there. Right now, taking up only four parking spaces, staging. The contractor's in the process of completing some small punch list items. However, the harbor master has received a temporary certificate of occupancy pending completion of the punch list. So the marina will be opening officially Monday the 15th, so welcome back to all the voters. That project was great. Steve and his staff did a great job. I think people are going to be very happy with that marina this summer. The contractor for the lighthouse project, Campbell Construction, will begin mobilizing the site next week. So you should expect to see some just preliminary work out there as the contractor sets up. They have water fencing that has not come in yet, and we are waiting for details on what they're going to do with the lake, whether they're going to take it off or how they're going to do that. Once we have that, we will share that with people. Just a reminder that that is paid for by the town's Community Preservation Fund and various grants to state agencies. Another project that we completed this week, though last week, is the library generator project is not complete. Generator was installed last week. It's not ready to go. So generator will help protect that building during freezes, keep freezing out, protecting terrace on the side, and also will serve as another place for residents to get cool or warm during blackouts, go charge their instruments, things like that. So great job by Kevin Kelly and the facility staff for getting that done. It was a lot of work last week, but now the library is fully generated. So when we do have blackouts, we have another building that people will be able to go to, get out of the store, and be safe for a little while. The assessors office wants everybody to know, in conjunction with the FY '24 revaluation, the assessors office is using the services of PK Associates to inspect all condominiums in the town of Citrus. Inspections are being conducted by Nancy Cole, a representative from the PK Evaluation Group, and motor vehicle registration details are on file with Central Police Department. If Mrs. Cole comes, you're doing an inconvenient time for an interior inspection. She'll make an open schedule, no appointment. You can call the assessors office if you have any questions at 781-545-8712. These are state mandated inspections that require the town to inspect the interior of every dwelling every 10 years. This year, the assessors office are focusing on the condominiums. So the assessors office wants to thank you for the cooperation, and will make this as quick and painless as possible. As we talk about Tony's last meeting, that means the elections are coming up. May 20th, the high school gym, full hours eight to six. May 10th, which is this week, is the deadline to register to vote. Absentee ballots are now available at town clerk's office. The deadline to absentee voter person new on May 19th. Vote by mail application is a sample ballot. You can find it on the town clerk's page for the town website. The deadline to request a mail ballot is next Monday, May 15th. Mail ballots must be returned to the town clerk's office, our town hall drop box prior to the close of the polls at 6:00 p.m. on Election Day. They should not be brought to the polls, turned in Election Day. They must come here. The bigger the polls, the more cause of confusion and problems for the polling offices and for yourself. If you do sign, please make sure you sign your early ballot envelope. And just a reminder from the town clerk, you must fill in the box with the oval. Fill it in, no checks. No access, please fill it in, otherwise the voting machine won't read it, and we have to count those ballots by hand. Citrus Veterans Day service is on Monday, May 29th, 2023. Ceremony begins 8:00 a.m. with the flotilla leaving, the harbor master's office, throwing a wreath to honor those lost sea. People with questions on that can contact Commander at Citrus Post 144 at commander@citruspost.org. The dispense to pray will form up here between 10:00 and 10:30. The prayer will step off at 10:30 sharp, seat down with Chris Pashor, the Lost and Common. The Lost and Common ceremony will begin at 11:15 a.m. In the event of the weather, the ceremony only will be held in JR Hall at 11 o'clock. There is limited capacity. There will be handicap parking at the east end of the common and a handicap porta potty on site for the ceremonies on the common. People with questions can ask the other duty police officers what they need to do for that parking. And finally, the fencing is up on the central field. That project's being started. The contractor is mobilizing as the installation agreement for softball field and renovation of the existing baseball field. That project is expected to last until late in the spring. And that's why I applaud the season.
Any questions for Jim? Jim?
Yeah, dead lighthouse question. Any idea of when that project will be completed? Is wedding season coming up? I know the press is... I'm just saying what a lot of people are going to ask.
It will not be completed for wedding season. I think Lorraine and Michelle can tell you. The phone has been ringing fairly steadily since the lighthouse clock came off. Unfortunately, that project will not be fully wrapped up until probably the end of the summer. We haven't got a schedule as to when they'll be putting the lighthouse clock back on. But if project groups aren't pictured at the last, they have to photoshop the clock back on, so it will be on the summer.
Go to shop away. Thank you.
I just have one comment, Jim, on the water treatment plant project. We've got to make sure that the trees on 3A are not taken down.
They're going to meet the requirements of the planning board, which is a 50-foot buffer.
Yeah, I think I'm more concerned about, there's going to be an entryway and an exitway. Once you cut out a tree, it's gone. And how you can save, I'm sorry. So we really got to make sure that we mark the trees, that these are the tendons that come down, and nothing else outside of us is going to come down, so.
The buffer will meet whatever the requirements of the planning board.
Yeah, I know the buffer is going into the property. I'm worried about the buffer.
Yeah, and we'll make sure, we've got to make sure we get that planned. We're still a real long way from that point, but we'll make sure it's got cut out the trees.
I mean, I really think they have to be marked. And then the only other thing I'd ask someone to look into, we had a call about a handicap parking spot on Front Street, how, you know, the one in front of CBS? Where it's not a driving, but it's a parallel park one, and it's not technically a handicap spot. So we just need to have someone go evaluate that, and getting up, getting a little shot of the traffic, or you have to go over something stretched to get up on a sidewalk, and it's not correct. So I think what we need to do is re-mark the way that that may have an on handicap spot. Put how many in the back, what we do, they go for it. So if you can just...
Yeah, take a look at it.
Yeah. All right, any other questions? We'll go on to our first topic, a discussion vote and the acceptance of some donations. The first one is a kayak paddleboard rack donation of $5,000 in waterways in memory of Dick Ed House. Let's see how we heard here. You want to come up and tell us about it?
It's been a great project between Waterways, the Harbor Master, Conservation Commission, and a lot of other people to build a two kayak paddleboard ramps, racks rather, or 16 racks available in Mount LaBri last week. So people had a chance to get involved and actually pick them up. So the Citrus Maritime Center Foundation wanted to donate back to that project $5,000 and have it be credited to the Waterways Endowment Credit Fund in memory of Dick Ed House, who was chairman of the Waterways Commission for a number of years, as well as a member. And we think this benefits a lot.
Any questions, Ralph?
So are we going to have a placard or something named for Dick?
We'd like to do that, yes. Dick Ed, great job. He was one of the founding people involved in the whole Maritime Center complex with you as well. And I think it's great, great summary. Any questions?
Yeah, no, I just want to say thank you. I never did, but there was a Citrus Maritime Foundation still existing. So thank you for preserving that and for doing this, and it's on.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Can I have a motion?
Welcome to the select board, accepted donation of $5,000 to the Waterways Enterprise Fund to help fund the new kayak paddleboard racks at Conservation Park. Further, I dedicate this donation in memory of former Waterways Commission Chair Dick Ed House.
Second, second. Mr. Dugrich, the discussion, see none or favor?
Aye.
unanimous. The next item is another donation. The next item is another donation of four hundred and twenty dollars to the rec department, Samm program, by the friends and camera Dick Ed House. Nick, how are you?
I'm good, Tony. How about you?
One more time.
Yeah, so first off, thank you to the Ed House family for having these donations going towards us. It's definitely going to help the program. With anything, there's a ton of upkeep. There has been with it over the past couple of years. The Mercury boats are getting older, so there's been a lot of unforeseen fixes that we've got to do with bolt works, especially last year. So I'm looking to use these funds in putting it back into the boats. So we're very thankful for the donation and reporting to my folks.
Any questions for you?
Is there a significance to marking twenty?
No, 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 no.
I thought it might be the type of sailboat, the four twenty and.
Actually, well, four, you have four twenty sailboats, but no, it actually just ended up.
I remember from my Citrus wreck sailing days.
But the four twenty boats are in a lot better shape right now than the Mercurys. So I think our main focus right now is just to fix up those.
It's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Yeah?
Play a motion?
Please.
Move that the select board accept the gratitude, a donation of a total of four hundred and twenty dollars to go towards the recreation department stand.
Scottfield for discussion, seeing none, all favor?
Aye.
I agree. Nick, thanks for coming in.
Thank you and thank you, Tony, for all your years and service out for the town.
Thanks, buddy.
Much appreciated.
Great job, we've done well.
Thank you.
All right, we have two more donations and they have both related to fire department. She's working one up along. Good evening. How are you? So the first one is a donation of ten thousand dollars for emergency response equipment from AJA International. AJA International.
A gentleman, he lives in Citrus. I was appreciative of working on the department, especially the dive team. Reached out to our dive team coordinator, it's not going to help, want to make a donation. So he made a donation of ten thousand dollars towards diet equipment, which we could definitely use some of my company's getting older and with the COVID updating that. So he wants to make a donation of ten thousand dollars for the dive team to improve their program.
Any questions? Then your phone.
Was there an incident with him? Was he associated? Oh, no, he, I think he does know a couple of people in the dive team, probably went to go with it, but just, you know, through some of the rescues in the last few years, water rescues, just reached out and said he wants to step up. Obviously, must do well, he wanted to make a donation, so next thing you know, he had him checking on desk, so. Yeah, very appreciative.
Why don't we do the next one together? There's a hundred dollar donation from Dennis Alon.
Yes, Dennis lives up in Bayberry and in mine, I think he was watching the fire up in mine, probably from his window, had a great view. And he sent a card with a hundred dollar check and saying, you know, he goes to fight about the great job with the fire and wanted to make a donation of a hundred dollars.
Yeah, great. Want to do that?
No.
That's just great and great job, the whole, the whole team and of course, all the other emergency services that handle that. I drove by the other day and just seeing it now, just what devastation it put in there.
It was quite a fire, I got to give kudos to the first spawning groups that got there. Captain Will actually, they get slapped right, because you don't slap right off the bat, it's all, excuse me, the whole thing. So he did a great job getting slapped, a lot of fire to deal with. And we had eleven towns total including towns that covered our stations coming to mutual aid, so five allowed. So it was a great stop. All the other chiefs I talked to, they were very impressed with the stop due to approximately the additional homes. So we stopped on the outside end, worked our way and contained it, and they did a great job. We were very fortunate, we were able to win that night, so. Well, thank you. Good job.
Any other questions for these two donations?
Move to accept a ten thousand dollar donation of AJA International incorporated to be used to purchase emergency response equipment for the Citrus Fire Department, Dive Team, and to further accept a donation of a hundred dollars to the Citrus Fire Department from Dennis Alon of thirty-nine Bayberry Road.
Settlers, call me for the discussion, seeing none, all favor?
Aye.
I agree. Thank you very much. What do you think, guys?
Okay, that's all the love, you know, for the two of them, the fire. Um, and what's the status of that site? Where the fire took place, the fires, when they're going to clean it up and?
It's supposed to be cleaned up, not a lot to check this out.
Okay, so that's, there's no delay for that?
A lot of it's insurance at this point.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to come on.
It's supposed to, they've been totally fenced off and secure, it's cleaned up. There's certainly a lot of fighting and just definitely then getting it back, that's a lot.
Yeah, it's more, more a debris as each weather gets better and better.
Yeah, I may, Amber by Penny Crisprow, I may add one more thing. It was in the coastal useless matter on Thursday. They're going for, whoever owns it now is going to go to the zone, going to deals to try to rebuild two houses or three. So it's in the autumn. Okay, was it?
The ones by the walkway?
The three that burned, the two together and one.
Two months, yeah, two months?
That part I don't know, but it's somebody from out of town.
Awesome, so we are, it's seven twenty-five. I am to discuss the Citrus Library naming opportunities, we'll go to the next meeting?
A future meeting.
Or a future meeting. And next one, we're going to discuss the public, actually, you can have that, right?
Right.
Well, we can go to that, we can do that. I see Joby there, you want to have Joby come up and talk about going to Fish Market and entertainment?
Let me agenda a lot.
Good evening. So we go in the land Fish Market. He has requested a permit for entertainment license.
And that is for the venue on second, third floor?
Venue on the second floor. We live in the second as well.
And what kind of entertainment are you thinking about?
You know, it just came up today, we're doing a karaoke dinner at the end of this month, so we have too many requests for music, but you know, that DJ like that, I mean, someone like acoustic on the second floor will afford a customer request, you know.
I've been there, I'm glad you're staying, do whatever you'll go. Great, thank you. Any questions for Joby in terms of entertainment license?
What type of entertainment do you usually have, Joby, and what kind of hours are you looking for?
The parties go from seven to eleven open till seven, so we just do seven to eleven on track events. And as far as, usually we just have a small speaker, like an Apple HomePod playing music. But if a guest requested, you know, a DJ, someone playing acoustic upstairs.
I think acoustic would be fine, like, uh, it's like quarters or?
Yeah, no, nothing amplified, maybe two small, like something like that.
Any other questions?
So I said, did you say nothing amplified, just acoustic?
Just acoustic, well, like a DJ would have, I guess, speaker, you know, amplification. Oh, my God.
Sure.
Have you had any complaints from neighbors about noise or anything like that?
No.
Because you've been in business for, what, a year maybe, I mean?
Two, two, over two years now with the events. And honestly, the building is so new, like, and I'm very aware because we have a residential area, all this business. We have apartments across the street and the neighborhood next door. But honestly, the building is so tight, insulated, I don't know what's happening, it's loud. Outside, it's quiet as, quiet as a breeze, so. Yeah, we had any issues with anything like that.
So the entertainment will be inside, second floor, not upstairs?
No, not, no.
Okay, thank you. And are we, I don't have anything in front of me, so can I discuss the hours? Is it seven to eleven, Monday through Sunday?
Uh, there'll be, usually the events are Thursday, Friday, Saturday. You don't have too many events earlier in the week.
Request is Sunday through Saturday from seven P.M. to eleven P.M.
Okay.
And there you go.
Thank you.
Amber by Jenny Crisprow. I'm just curious why a fish market needs an entertainment license? This is not a restaurant. When the planning board approved this administrative site planning review, that area in the middle part on the second floor was designated as office space. Not a restaurant. And I know that you all have given, allowed events, et cetera. But again, there is no parking and the ladies did receive a waiver, because there was no parking, a waiver for spaces that they needed for the office space. So I'm just curious why y'all would recommend or allow this for Fish Market, because that's what they came to the planning board for. Curious, that's all.
Well, it's evolved into more than a fish market. And it's not a restaurant by any means, but they do have special functions there that really help the community with a lot of.
I understand that, Mr. North.
I'm answering the question why we're giving the people, or considering giving them an entertainment license.
I would suggest that it is, if it works like a duck and it whacks like a duck, it's a duck. It's a restaurant. It is, there are tables that are set up.
Thank you. It's not a restaurant. It's more of a store that sells a convenience store of some effect than a restaurant. But they do have special functions there and they do have the ability to cook there. And that's why they're before heads right now, because like I said, they do not a lot, but some special functions during the course of the year that, you know, we all think are beneficial to the town, so. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just, to Mr. Robert's point, I, this is very similar, your space is very similar to Board One Court Group. And they come to us for special permits. I don't believe they, they don't, they haven't requested it. It's a very similar space, it's a retail space that is being used to usually. I don't recall having a blanket permit. It's always been by special permit. I think that you're right that we should commend Mr. Norton, because his business is growing, it's good for the harbor, it's good for the business. I don't think parking has been an issue. I just wonder, a change of use, does that ever, I mean, two questions. One, does a change of use ever trigger a revisit of the?
I would think of the point, but then again, you all, I understand the good that has been done. But it's still, you have fifty to seventy-five people showing up for special events. There's, I've been to one and there's parking all the way up and down Long Street. It is an issue, people. So let's.
I think the question was achievement.
Does it require?
I would think that it will, it should.
That's okay. And then the second is, you know, I, I think that you've got two years of demonstrated experience off the one offs. The willingness involved that we should do any kind of support, you know, a good steward of that space. Because I didn't know that the parking, that people do, sometimes places to park when they want to get somewhere. Because I think this is the point, so.
Sure.
Go ahead.
No, I guess, like the philosophic, I was thinking of the jujitsu place, right? So they would have tournaments and they make birthday parties and they listen to the DJ for the jujitsu tournaments, you got amplified. The music during that, maybe have a fence, they did a big cancer event where they raised all this money. So I totally understand what you're saying. I guess, I guess setting up your, want to help support those businesses that are growing and saying, hey, and the fishing community. I mean, I understand that we have to make sure that doesn't become a bigger issue, but if you're asking why, that's, that's my response, why is that, well?
I'm supportive, but I do, I hear, this can feel, what's the process for a change of use? Because if you, and I'm very familiar, you know, I go in there almost every other weekend. I know you've got a kitchen in the back, it's more catering than any home goes. It's not a restaurant in my mind. So I don't know the difference is between a market that does catering as far as a license versus a restaurant. I mean, it's not a restaurant, what I want. It's just a market that does catering and has a, a, you know, kitchen in order to facilitate that. That would be very clear, because restaurants, a whole other set of rules, the board of health has decided on. So that would be triggered if you wanted to do that.
I did grab a list of other, you know, businesses in town that are entertainment offices or, but you know, you have several things to compare it to. The Lucky Finn hasn't been, if they're been, for example, on the harbor. They bring caterers in, unlike Joby May, sometimes bring caterers in or put them himself.
But those are one of those. But that's not a restaurant, yeah, that's, yeah.
That's the cat bank, really.
Well, cat bank, right.
No, I'm just, I'm just giving some examples of that. I'm just offering information. Board one, fourth, eighth, and the joint.
I just thought, it doesn't need to be reclassified, that's all. And I'll give a note of that entails, like, what is the process of reclassifying?
If it needs to be. Well, the special firm, they're on the cycling administrative review, that was office space on the fourth floor. That's what it's supposed to be, that's what it was approved for by the planning board. So they want to change it to a cavity news from the member. Then I think maybe we need to have a discussion. That's all.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, that's all I'm trying to get to.
It's a retail space now. Retail space, just like the first one, retail space.
Yeah, contracts?
I'm not trying to put anybody out of business, I just want the rules to be flawed.
Well, I agree, I agree a hundred percent. The parking that you brought up should be held for planning fields, very planning field, that's all. But then you want to go, but there are quite a number of places that have been allowed to have restaurants exceeding, but do not have a job site parking.
And so they have pulled our way against?
Yes, and that's what I use as well, you know.
So I think, I think it's, these are all good discussions. I think Joby hears us and I think.
Absolutely, it would be better to, like, again, we don't do entertainment. I think, I think this is for the first one we come for, for the one days. I mean, I have no problem with a one day entertainment if they have a rise, that's easier than you guys. Doesn't matter to me whether it was the easiest for board. It doesn't matter, like I said, if we have fifteen, so if that's a year, and one person wants an acoustic, I have no problem. I would ask for a one day entertainment, that's easier.
Well, I think the thought behind this was it would be easier.
Easier to have, yeah, I agree.
So, you know, I think Andrew brings us to the point, we want development, we want activity in the harbor. I think Andrew brings up a good point of maybe this isn't completely set up properly and should have a change of use, which you're hearing.
Yeah, I'd be happy to go through that route, someone, unless we're allowed to do that, I would custom build what you had used. That's what it needs to be permanent for.
Well, we'll suggest that you follow up with, with the next steps for that.
Sure.
So do we consider placing an emotion that within the next year, you know, Mr. Norton will pursue the process of a change in use? I don't know, like, you tie those two together with entertainment from it, but, I mean, this is the annual, so it would only, it would only be a year. How the hell long that process takes, do you have?
And I think the reason why I never went for a change of use to begin with, because the building was always a fish market.
Right.
It's still a fish market.
Right.
So it's not really a change of use.
Extended use.
Extended use, perhaps, but it's still a sell a fish.
Right, I would, what would you say, eighty percent of the time, it's a retail fish market?
I'd say ninety, yeah, ninety-nine percent, right, ninety-eight percent of the time, so.
So does everyone feel comfortable passing this for now and then when it comes up for renewal next year? You know, seeing what the status of a change of use is, if that's even necessary?
So I, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, is it possible that if we issue this permit? And again, for, is it Monday through, Thursday through Sunday?
The permit is for Sunday through Saturday, all seven days away from seven to eleven P.M.
And what, what this will do is, you won't have to come in every time you have a special there?
Right, if, if they are having. Right, if, if they are having.
Yeah, but, so what's the, what's the dividing line between all of a sudden, there's a special event there, five nights a week? Um, is that what this allows? Would you have to?
Technically, I. Well, I would still, I believe I would still have to come up for a special.
For the liquor license?
Well, for a permit for the.
The caterer.
The caterers for the evening at one night.
And what about the liquor license? You have the liquor license.
We have the liquor license, so.
Here's a pack of store with the license.
Right.
Right, and the caterers.
Which is not a restaurant.
Okay, right. I think that's where it gets all confused here.
And then Joby applies for one day liquor licenses for his events.
Okay.
As you'll see on the agenda.
And if it's a package store license, that means that he can sell some liquor to whoever's having a special event.
Sell bottles of wine, beer, with the fish.
Well, the customer.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, the caterers do the, correct, the help.
Well, I, I can see the confusion here.
I mean, it's a good problem, right? You built a fish market, it grew into something much better and bigger, and it just has to be like that again. We certainly don't want to stymie, you know, commerce of the harbor.
Well, more, you don't want to make more paperwork for anyone, you already have enough paperwork. But if, if we can look forward to having you take the steps to find out what you need to do.
Absolutely.
Before he said, yeah, if we can go with that, that's it.
Can I have a motion if we're all in agreement with that?
Move to approve an indoor, annual indoor entertainment license for ladies' fish market located at Eight Allen Place for music by performer, a singer, amplified or DJ during private events. With following hours, Sunday through Saturday, from seven P M to eleven P M. Second.
Second one is common, further discussion, any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, not a change of use. And so I just, you know, as a legislative situation, a business, all the six are just what problems and you. Creative service and select advisory board, and it's, I know firsthand, a thankless job for the most part. Um, she's been a mentor to being on the board for twenty years, she did, all the people you've helped over the years.
Thank you, Joby, and I'd miss if I didn't.
Yeah.
Cause you're dad. He was the true mayor of Cituette and helping out.
Well, thanks to you guys, keeping it up, it works, so.
Thank you. All right. Um, what time is it now? Seven thirty, should we have five minutes? Actually, well, yeah. Why don't we jump down and Nancy, the question, Kevin, will you be five minutes? Come on, Kevin.
I, he wasn't five minutes.
You're so happy right now.
So we're going to jump down to number nine, what, the special.
Yes.
So it looks like there's three vehicles that you, that were passed at town meeting that you have the requisitions to purchase.
There's three vehicles and there actually is a fourth that Jim said we could potentially add, and I'd ask him if that's possible. Um, the first vehicle, um, was for a Ram truck. It's a small dump truck that we use to sand. And we were able to find one in stock that we could, um, through the interstate bid list. We also have a second pickup truck, which is the same, it's a big dump truck. And we'll use that to stand also, it's replacing a standard, um, from one of our previous markets we worked in top. The third contract we were looking to do was replace our Toro mower, which a lot of people see, it's the big mower with the big, big side decks and everything else to all the fields. So, um, we've been having issues with the one we have, so that was, money was appropriated for that at, at town meeting. And the fourth item that we came up with is actually a sidewalk tractor. And we were able to find one that is on the state bid list, we'll get all the state discounts that's available and in stock. That's why we were kind of moving quickly to get that, because we were running out of a lot of equipment, having trouble with it disappears quickly. Um, what we're doing is Nancy was smart enough to get us on the agenda so we get some of this money allocated ahead of time. So we could buy it before the big rush comes in from all the other towns, we may get the money allocated July first. So we're trying to take advantage of it as much as possible, and, um, we were really proud of the pavement to get this. So the sidewalk tractor is from a company called Chadwick Barso Incorporated. And the cost of the front of the tractor with all the attachments, which include the snow blower, plow, um, and two sets of tires is for a hundred eighty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Say that number again.
One eight one five six five, yes.
All right, let's deal with the three first.
Yep.
Um, I know these were all passed, are they all under the, the allotted dollar amount?
Yes.
By both, do you know what they were, like the sixty-nine thousand?
Sixty-nine thousand, we had seventy, seventy-five thousand allocated, we'll probably outfit the truck with a radio and some other listening aids.
Yeah, spend all that money.
Well, trucks need a radio and we need, you know, we gotta be, there's no equipment, this is just for the truck itself.
Um, the second one?
We spent it all for the fifty-five hundred. Um, we had a grand total of about thirty-five dollars left on that allocation. Yep, and the mower was one fifty, I believe, um, we got it, I want to say the allocation was one sixty-five?
It was one sixty.
One sixty, so we got it for about nine thousand dollars.
Does anyone have any questions on those three vehicles?
No.
No. Good, good job getting the wall in there. Um, why don't we, uh, avoid those ones first, do a motion for those three?
Move the select board award the contractor purchaser, twenty twenty-three Ram thirty-five hundred series dump truck in the amount of sixty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars from Hillsborough C D R J, Aham. Move the select board award the contractor purchaser, a Ram fifty-five hundred truck, it outlined in attachment A number two, from Hillsborough C D J R, in the amount of seventy-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars, Aham. Um, move that the select board award the contractor purchaser, the ground bastard fifty-nine ten Toro mower from Truck Products in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred and sixty-one thirty-seven cents.
Second. Second one is current, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, five to zero for those three. So the one that's not on the agenda, is that fine to have, Jim?
Yeah, we could have that, we could have things to do down at the board, we do that, it's just, this equipment's like whack a mole, you either grab it or it's gone, you can wait for the next one to pop off, so. It wasn't in the time to be on the agenda, but I told Kevin, bring it in. Whatever, you have the ability to have to excuse that.
Okay, and how much was allotted for this one?
One eighty-nine two hundred. And who's the, uh, who are we purchasing from?
We are purchasing it from Chadwick Barros, they're the only supplier of the minimum of this piece of product.
B A R O S?
B A R O S S. Chadwick's first.
Any questions for Kevin on the sidewalk tractor? How many, I know we have one that's on its last leg, right?
We have two, one is two thousand four, the other is two thousand six, our two thousand six model is from the town of Owo, a scrap, we took it over for parts. Our mechanics have been able to piece it back together, so we put a model in case of emergency. So right now we have two, usually the one runs at a time. We're going to keep the old one, try to keep it on the road, so after a storm, we get two sidewalk machines out, get the sidewalks ready for her.
Any questions from the audience?
Seven thirty.
Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
Move that the select board contract purchaser, a new sidewalk tractor from Chadwick Brothers, in the amount of one hundred eighty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Second one, Mr. Kudrich, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you very much, and there it is, Ian Tony, as I said before, it's a pleasure.
Thank you, Kevin, likewise. You're doing a great job. All right, so now we have a public hearing, the discussion vote on the operation of the premise, um, it's, uh, seven thirty, this is the drift in. See, I mean, here. Uh, who's, I'm going to come up and talk about that, come on. A quick overview, at our last meeting, we voted on, um, allowing the drift in to utilize the space in the kind of cart parking area between the tenth tee and the eighteenth green. And we were going to put, um, the twelve tables up there, is that?
Uh, it's going to be, uh, ten tables and then there'll be twenty seats around the bar.
Twenty seats around the bar.
Twenty, twenty seats.
And you're coming before us now to ask for the liquor license to serve up from all of that, so. Any questions for? Yeah, okay. Kevin?
How long does it take for construction, everything's kind of pre-built, is that right, or?
Everything's, uh, getting prefab offsite, as soon as I get, um, staff structural drawings for the building permit. A little work, a little bit of work, and then we just wait until it's done.
So we talked about this at the last meeting where, where we're worried about the winds, and it is actually going to be, uh, struck, you know, cemented into the ground, and it will be a, a firm structure.
Correct, so what we're going to do now with the architect is we're going to, I think it's six sonnets with a cement platform on top. And then it's going to get, um, attached directly into the sonnets, they go down four feet. So it's got all the frost lines, not the cracks or the gills and roofs. So we're just looking to structure it and then just have that.
So the structure itself is not going to cover the whole area, it's only for the bar?
It's only for the bar, correct.
And what is the size of that?
It is.
I have to draw it to the floor.
I believe it is, uh, sixteen by twenty, but that includes the overhang of the roof.
Right.
Which is two feet more aside.
Okay, and then you'll have ten tables outside, is that right? Wait, one more, yeah, Kevin?
Um, I don't think we asked, I, we may have asked when we approved this, um, are you planning on having any entertainment out there?
I, we talked about it, but I don't think it really works because of the blowers.
Right.
So we might have, no one, like, any bands or acoustical, we might just keep that to low speakers, you know, just a, no attached to the house music, but nothing crazy.
Because my only concern would be the winds down there.
Uh, it depends.
Yeah, uh, who knows where the, the sound is going.
Yeah.
And so I just want to be sure that, at least for the time being, that it wasn't contemplated. And that it's really meant to expand the seating for the restaurant and for the golfers to enjoy. And for some, hopefully, fundraisers down there for tournaments.
Well, we have a few in the, so, I would say that we save up for the last.
Thank you.
And they, they would need an outdoor entertainment permit anytime they do that.
Yeah.
Currently, you have an indoor one upstairs.
Yes.
Karen?
Um, I thank you for the diagrams of the setup, and it looks like there's one entrance for patrons to come into that area, and.
Yeah, there's one to come in and one to come out, so we can keep control of everybody, and, um, so it's easier to keep an eye on everybody.
All right, are you deciding having a, any kind of hostess standard, or it just be?
Uh, we won, of course, yeah.
Um, I mean, I'm getting most of the people coming in on the porch, so it's.
Usually, it's, but eighty percent of it's cordless, golfers.
Okay, and you did the, the permit request to be issued until nine o'clock, and I was a little concerned about being late, because I feel there's something, I pointed out that it doesn't step, the sun doesn't set. So, um, the anticipation isn't to be out there in the evening.
No, we're not looking to having to the race, James.
And is this just, is this, um, are we limiting this to seasonal, it's not written that way as a motion, you know?
Uh, maybe, okay, we're just going to ask for season, maybe the winter.
Right, so.
It's a, in the end, in the summer, we can stretch it out.
Right, so we would, I'm just thinking of that, so we would do it annual, not do. Do you have a place to store the, um, furniture in or not?
Not on site, we don't, um, it's probably someone that objectively love Ian, but I never would have been for it. So we don't, um.
Yes. It's because it's on site, once the carts go underneath, so.
Did you not have the show for a year?
Yeah. We don't have a load around the course.
Nope. Glad you have to draw.
Any questions for me? Welcome, buddy. Great, so we already passed the, um, the use of the space, and this is for the, the liquor license. That is a good point, do we want to limit it from May to November or something, or that, or just leave it here around?
Excuse me, Mr. Vina, this is an alteration premise for a existing liquor license, which is not seasonal.
Okay.
So it would be a separate license if you chose. I would not recommend that.
So, but the hours are different for indoor and outdoor, right?
That's fine.
I'm sorry?
That's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
Fifty hours.
Because you have, what's an inside toll, midnight?
Uh, yeah, that's, it's a lab, so during the weekend, then.
Any questions from the audience? Right? If there's none, then we're all in agreement, can I have a motion?
Move to approve an alteration of premise to expand the all alcohol, all alcoholic beverage license, sorry, the words are really small. For drift in, a big businesses for drift in, at twenty, two hundred fifty driftways, Cituette. The alteration of premise includes new structure within, with seventeen or twenty cars, uh, seats, and after seating for twenty patrons. With a total of seventeen ninety-two square feet, uh, which will be delineated with fencing and planters. And move to approve the hours of operation for the outside area as follows. Monday through Thursday, eleven A M to nine P M, Friday to Saturday, nine A M to nine P M, and Sunday, ten A M to nine P M. Second.
Second one is current, further discussion. I do have one comment, we did, we did talk about, um, briefly at our last meeting, um, additional rent for the additional space that we're talking here. And we decided that because of the investment that they're putting in it for, for the first year, and the newness of it, that, that it wasn't necessary. And we also do get a percentage of the revenue from it, so there's some revenue associated there. So at this point, we're not going to do anything with that, we'll evaluate that, and this is, uh, that. Okay, um, and we have a motion, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, none, it is unanimous, five to zero. Great.
Thank you.
What do you think the opening day would be?
The summer's preparing, and I will be ready in two weeks, so.
Oh, so, probably in four to six weeks.
Hopefully, yeah, should have it done soon enough, I mean, well.
Great.
All right, thank you very much.
That's fine.
Thank you.
All right. So we have another public hearing, but not for five minutes, for the, uh, theater. Mark, how long are you going to be here?
Five.
How, Mark? So we're going to jump down to a discussion vote on these contracts, Chief Mark Thompson.
Good evening, how are you? Doing well, how are you? We'll move right along.
Yes.
Do you want to stay on the downline with us?
I would be happy to stay as well, you hear what Tony, you know. Uh, sir, you want to start with the safe boat?
Yeah.
That works, so, uh, back at town meetings, uh, we were fortunate enough to get some additional funding to supplement what we had in the Port of Spurty grant. The new boat is in the works, it's hopefully going to be completed by the end of the summer. When the energy is going to be along with that, remains to be seen. So the delivery is a little bit up in the air at this point, but it's coming along well. Uh, so part of that deal was that, once the vote came in, we would be looking to sell the existing twenty-five foot safe boat that we have. Um, we are fortunate in Quincy, who is happening to be in the market for a safe boat and has some money, um, that they'll be able to purchase the boat from us. So it basically, a couple of wins come up here, um, the amount that they, they've been able to come up with, pretty much covers what we had at town meeting, that we had to do that borrow for. The other big thing about this is that it's guaranteed money right now, is we're watching kind of where the market is on used boats. Of course, maybe anywhere from seventy to one hundred and fifty-ish plus. Um, so if we take the risk of going to auction, we may not necessarily recover the entire amount we're looking to get back. Uh, Quincy is somebody that we trained with regularly, and then a great partner for us on the wire over the years. So, uh, there's definitely a benefit to keeping the boat in the region and keeping it with a partner that we work with all the time. And they have also agreed that we can continue to utilize the boat, basically as long as we need to, uh, to get us through the summer and sell it while the new boat arrives. So it's pretty much a win for us, and then we can get the contract done, get things squared away with the money, and be ready for the new boat in the process.
Good job, so we're going to sell the old boat for a hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And then what does that contribute, the whole financing of the whole boat? And then what does that contribute, the whole financing of the whole boat?
Uh we appropriated a hundred point five eight hundred, so it's only off nine hundred dollars.
Okay.
That's how much we're gonna, the town's gonna yell for the brand new five hundred thousand dollar boat.
We're looking at a big sale to cover any difference. This is for the nine hundred bucks, we'll help you with that. I I will note that this is broken because of the way Quincy's looking to fund this, basically two different um intergovernmental property possession agreements that Nancy and I went through and then we ran by town council as well and had a consensus on it too, so. That gets us to that one forty-four nine nine nine.
Great. Any questions for the chief?
No.
No?
It's a great market. Thank you.
Great work. Um why don't we get a motion on that one, then we'll go to the next, any questions from the audience? All right, have a motion?
Move to approve the intergovernmental property agreement with the Quincy Police Department for sale of the police department's twenty-five foot safe boat Defender vessel in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Further, uh move to approve the intergovernmental property agreement with the Quincy Police Department for sale of the police department's maritime electronic equipment, which is being decommissioned from the department's twenty-five safe boat Defender vessel in the amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Okay.
Second members come, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Awesome. All right, now some radio.
I'm sorry, I think there's a motion to declare the boat surplus so that we can sell it, that was missed.
Was that in the, was it before the?
It was before the um property agreement with Quincy. I can give it to you.
It's a gift to the heritage.
Yeah.
Can we just win it or?
Yeah, sorry. Move to declare the situat police department twenty-five foot safe boat Defender class vessel and associated electronic equipment as surplus. Second.
Second members come, further discussion? Seeing it's already sold, all in favor?
Aye.
Awesome, thank you, all right. Um now we'll move on to the radio.
Very good, so we had a town meeting article, capital article for three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for purchase of new portable and mobile radios um and kind of associated equipment with that. We wanted to move forward quickly to get this contract done and things in the pipeline have heard anywhere from two months to probably more realistically six plus months before we'll actually see things with uh supply chain issues, so uh this is under state contract P S E zero one with Alcom Technologies, which is a vendor that we historically use for our radio equipment. Basically, it I think probably in your packet breaks down what we're looking at in terms of UHF portable radios, VHF radios, dual band radios, uh and this is both portable and mobile, so this is what the officers are carrying in addition to what's going into our position. So the total on this would be two hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and point seven dollars and sixty-three cents. Uh we're anticipating to make some additional purchases with the money that's still there, where we wanted to get this initial purchase and early end moving and then we can kind of reassess.
And would the other purchases be associated with the radios as well?
Correct, yeah, yeah, it's all still associated, but this gives us an opportunity to get things moving quickly as far as we're working on the D B Ns are.
And the article that was passed was for three fifteen six four. Any questions for chief? More?
Is there any additional infrastructure needed for these?
This is basically all of the mobile portions that go along with it, so this isn't necessarily infrastructure. We did that over the course of the past couple of years, we've done a lot with the repeaters, uh and infrastructure for the towers and this.
Want to play, just switch them out.
Exactly.
All right, can I have a motion?
Move to award the contract to Alcom Technologies in the amount of two hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents.
Second, second by Mr. Goodrich, any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, five zero. Congratulations.
Thank you, I'll leave you on our five minutes.
You're great, all right, you're great, you can go watch yourself.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, totally thank you.
Mark, thank you very much, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you, Mark.
I'd go home, I'll watch myself.
We'll be fine.
All right, it's uh now seven forty-five, we have another public hearing, a discussion and a vote for the Real Harbor Theater and an application that they're looking for an all alcohol beverage general on premise liquor license. Uh Matt Mitchell and Emily in Portland office?
McCall.
Emily, McCall, sorry.
Evening.
How are you?
Matt Mitchell from Lord of Burg releasing Harris for the applicants. Um we have um Paul McCullough and Adam Maru, who are both managers in the LLC. Um we have Emily McCullough, who is going to be uh the manager with boots on the ground if the license is indeed um issued. And we have Susan Maru, who um is Paul's, uh Emily's, I'm sorry, is Adam's wife.
Adam, she gonna be affiliated with the association?
She is not.
Okay.
She's got a, I believe a knock on her. So if if it took you to the board, I'd just like to give you a little bit of a background, um for the people that are behind the application, just so you know kind of who it is that you're considering tonight, um Paul and Emily are situat residents. They've got four kids in the situat school system. Paul and Maribel at Gates, Manigate Jenkins, and Miley at Urban Preschool. Paul is a former chief petty officer in the Navy, where he served as a Navy SEAL with numerous combat deployments. Adam and Susan are also situat residents and have one son, two-year-old Diego, and will soon have another addition to the family. Adam is a former lieutenant commander in the Navy, where he served as a Navy SEAL and conducted numerous combat deployments. Adam is the founder of One Summit, which is a nonprofit, which helps build resilience in children with cancer. One Summit has a presence in three major cities and has helped hundreds of children with challenges with cancer. Susan works part-time at O two X, which I will describe in a minute, and also runs a successful wedding event planning business. There are two other partners um to the LLC, one is Gabriel Gomez and one is Matt Vicus. Gabriel has four kids, is also a former Navy SEAL as well as an aircraft carrier pilot. Matt is a veteran of the U N H for recent sonboarded wreckers and is the head of North American Sales for Morgan Stanley. Adam, Paul and Gabriel are co-founders of O T X Human Performance. Their offices are in um the theater building, it's a worldwide company who is in situat obviously. O two X develops and implements programs to give that physical and mental challenges for first responders, government agencies and Department of Defense. Emily is a former registered nurse who received her R N from Virginia Commonwealth University. She currently works part-time with O T X, manages rental properties and is actively involved with volunteer opportunities in the situat school system. At Jenkins, she is the head of the roof committee and participates in Boosterthon in the field and she's on the field committee and the Walk to School Day campaign. She's apparently a zone, she's Jenkins' P D O. Uh and at Gates, she's the head of the dance committee and the head of field. Emily will be the manager in the theater, she has been TIPS trained and has made a concerted effort over the last several months to ensure that the theater will operate in a safe and lawful manner. She is aware of the seriousness of underage drinking and Matt was Sergeant O'Brien to go over protocols to help ensure that underage individuals will not have access to alcoholic beverages while on the process. The Real Harbor Cinema intends on complying with town rules and regulations and also has added a couple of other extra protocols. One is to install surveillance cameras outside in the concession area and in the theater, there will be signs posted stating the premises will be marked. Signs will be posted stating alcohol is not permitted beyond the inside areas. There will be a limit of one beverage at a time per person. While the requested closing time is eleven, no alcohol will be served after ten thirty and will be locked away. All servers will be TIPS certified. And Sergeant O'Brien has also indicated that he will come through the premises during business hours to give an impression of his presence. I think it's important to note that this is not a money-making venture. For my clients, they feel reopening the theater would be a great way to give back to the situat community. The unique draw a theater offers would benefit the shops and restaurants in downtown situat. Given the history of the theater, the board is probably aware of the economic challenges in running this business, particularly with only one screen. Concessions, which include the lawful sale of alcoholic beverages, would assist in meeting those challenges. So, questions?
Great, thank you for coming in, thank you for revitalizing the theater. You've all, I guess you've given off all the things that you did in the P T Os, I think all of us were, both of us. Yep, and then come back here. So um I think we have some questions, I wanna hear from you guys, what's your intention in the theater? The whole liquor license requirement and others, and the new twist, not necessarily the industry, but in in our town and in the functionality of that theater? And just get a sense of what what you're trying to do here um with the space.
So truthfully, we started with buying a building for O two X as our headquarters and obviously, we we didn't wanna buy a building and have our headquarters and not bring back the theater. We couldn't look at our young kids' eyes and be like, guess what, we bought a movie theater, we're gonna take it down. Uh so we kind of backdoored into it, like the guys came to us and asked us, what do you think? And we responded, we can't do it unless the theater opens up again. They did some reorganizing of the layout to have that happen. And then at that point diving in to the business, um realized, okay, this is a little bit um we're gonna be a bit red if we don't get creative here. Um and so one of the creative ideas was, all right, if we can bring in some revenue with the parents or couples coming in and we can have a beer and go into the theater, that can probably actually double our revenue. Um so in the film industry, they give you about fifty to sixty-five percent, you have to pay back to the film distributor. So the ticket cost is pretty much between that and the credit card processing fees, we're walking out with a couple bucks. Um so concession sales is is why you see movie theaters so expensive. Um and we just felt like this was a great opportunity, it wasn't like you said, a new idea. It was just, hey, let's just get situat out to the times and make this a long-lasting adventure that's at least breaking us even, you know, there's a lot of synergies with with two X helping, you know, with the financial part to get us off the ground and running and kind of just a family business, you know, we're super serious about the kids, you know, my son's fourteen, he's in eighth grade and my biggest thing is, you know, making sure this doesn't turn into some voiding disaster at the building that we own. Like this is, this is our, these are our people, this is our community, um we just, we kind of went with our heart on this one and it's it's definitely a bigger learning curve than we thought, but um I've jumped all in on this liquor license and I feel really confident about it. Um I feel really safe and I feel like I have really a backbone in town if you could get it through.
Yeah, um can you tell us a little bit about the space itself? So I I'm not sure, I've heard what you said about O two X, I don't know what they do, so it's like one theater off the space, or is it, is it therapy space or?
I'm sure you're familiar with the building, so
Yeah.
from known as to the courtyard, it's be on that bottom floor. I bet you brought that from, fuck. And so, really the function, that whole middle area that you look at, like right from the main stairs, that's O, that's O two X, that's our headquarters. We don't do any physical training there and it's just logistics, it's our H Qs and marketing operations, things like that. The larger theater, the big screen is, is actually closer to the courtyard where Chopsticks and Clarks is, so that's where we moved the concession area. So that concession area, we're right off the courtyard, uh single, single entrance in, movie screen, single entrance out. So it's pretty, it's a pretty, it's a pretty simple operation, it's small, like you're walking right off the courtyard into the stairs, into the concession, one door opens into the theater.
Good, is known as gonna stay there?
Yeah.
Okay, so so the the space where the current ticket is now in the theater behind the bathrooms and behind that, that's all, you're all the space for O two X?
Yeah, so basically it's known as, private offices, theater, concession, courtyard.
And to give you an idea, we did a big renovation where there's three bathrooms in the concession area now, so where Silverstorm was located, if you can picture that, that door is the same door for the concession. So you're walking into like, you're going into Silverstorm, it's a small narrow kind of channel and we have a big island of a concession stand. To your right is a bathroom, then it's the entrance to the theater and then two further bathrooms, so it's a very small space. It's gonna be like a, you're patiently waiting in line to get in kind of situation.
Cause all the people are gonna be there now.
Okay, so you're actually using Silverstorm space as well?
So Silverstorm has left in there and that's it, yeah, so that that.
That is what, that is the concession.
That is the concession area.
And if you allow the exit, the exit from the big movie theater going out, which was next to Silverstorm, that area is all one big area, that is all the concession area now. So that ramp is not there and everything, floor was leveled and now when you come in one that main Silverstorm en- uh Silverstorm entrance, you go in concession area and you walk right into the uh movie theater.
Awesome, one question then, I'm not getting it, so I'm not hot here. Um can you tell me what your kind of uh theme is in terms of movies that you wanna show? So typically, there were two theaters before and one always had a Disney movie and kind of the other one had other stuff, but what what do you, with, you're kind of limited with only one theater. Are there gonna be, is it themed more towards children still, or is it more towards adult, or you're gonna show one of them early hours and a different one in the later hours, what what's your?
So the the dream plan was the kids in the morning and the adults at night, but sadly the film um industry doesn't allow that. So the way it works is I've been um rigorously, almost as long as the A V C license, individually making relationships with all the film distributors, Universal, Landscape, Paramount, Disney, all of those, there's probably eight major ones. And once I finalize a contract with them, I have to choose whether I'm a first run or a sub-run, like a repertoire business. So we're going with first run, which means they are gonna give me a list of their new releases and I choose from the new releases and then they tell me how long I have to keep it into the theater. Um most of the representatives are extremely understanding that it's a single theater and that two weeks might be as long as we can hold it without saying, hey, we're literally bringing in zero dollars for both of us. Um and they're like, hey, listen, be open with us, talk to us, we'll help you, if we can put in something else, we can. Um so the plan right now is to go off the first runs, so for example, June sixteenth, there's actually only two movies that are coming out. And it's Elentl, which is a fixed disc movie, and then Warner um Warner Brothers is Flash, The Flash. So they're both kid movies, so we'll go with one of them. Um the next one, Indiana Jones, adult movie, kinda, you know, so we're gonna, we're gonna change it up. Um I'm hoping it's like situat heritage days, we can be creative and talk to um Disney doesn't allow you to do repertoire movies if you're a first run, that some of the other industries will allow us to be creative or maybe some, what like, you know, less popular classics or even situat run films. I think we'll be able to be creative and kind of intertwine that over time. Um but to answer your question, it's one movie at a time for at least two weeks, sometimes if it's a big one like Avatar, they can call you and be like, yeah, sorry, we're gonna keep that for another week, which will poorly ruin my calendar, but we'll work to adjust as as they, as they tell me. Um.
So it's not really gonna be kids-oriented, you're just gonna look at the movies and they're gonna tell you what the best one is and you're gonna run whatever, whatever happens.
No, we hope, we hope to have kind of a variety um and kind of go with what's in.
I'll be quiet for a minute, you guys have a question? Any woman?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um first of all, thank you for your passion, um for being so considerate of all people, you just sound extremely thoughtful about a tired endeavor. I'm curious, it sounds like it's a very small space, so um when patrons purchase alcohol, are they taking it into the theater? Or are they restricted to consume it outside while they're waiting, meaning the lobby?
No, no, it'll be, there wouldn't be a mess room to do that, it would be, it'd be, yeah, it'd be like, you know, going to a player theater and you go in, you get a, get a drink and go to the room. It won't be a mess room, we're gonna hang out.
And um you've, you've obviously gone down this road, this is you're very far down the road with with your planning, your business plan and and saw that, you know, the alcohol would most likely help you. What is that percentage left that you expect to get, you know, like really how important is it for you to really serve alcohol and for your business to be successful?
I mean, depends what you think, like if it's vital, like if that's, like, for example, if the existing person, like it's been out of business for all three years. we pretty much offered free rent to run it and it was still in there. So, just think about ticket sale costs and then say sixty percent of that is gone. So the ability to just have a little bit extra, now we have the benefit that we own the building, right? Like O two X is our primary business, so we can help when it comes to utilities and things like that. So that's the reason why we think we can have a long-term lasting business. But liquor license is like, sort of essential in making sure this can be a long-term thing, which I think by and large, it seems like everyone who talks wants. Just gonna really help the bottom line. And so, obviously you've done all your homework, all your, it seems like it's, it's the trend, serving alcohol at theaters. The one in Hanover does now, but the smaller, Summerdale and all the, they're all, they're all, it's kind of a new, uh, sort of trend. And is it, is it gonna be draft, just bottles, uh, if it does get approved, or is it not mixed drinks, what would be happening?
So we have just a small cooler space that we hope to like partner with, like untold, maybe have a couple beers, some other canned trendy things like Heineons or Trulies, that type of thing. Um, someday down the line, maybe throw a blended drink in there, like a, um, we call it the real crush. But that's kind of even secondary, you know? We're really, we're really taking a small cooler and it's just like, hey, can I grab a Truley, that kind of thing.
The full liquor license allows us just a little bit more creativity, right? Like if you look around, like people love the Heineons, they love the Canteens, it can offer like a signature drink, just to, to help.
So how many, uh, times a day would you be running the movies? Does it depend on the length of the movie? Sometimes it might be three, sometimes it might be two.
Exactly, um, the weekends will be, we'll probably run between twelve, I would guess, to ten P M-ish. Um, which would allow maybe three runs. Um, you know, like on shorter days during the week, even not even open during Monday through Wednesday, just to start. The capability of kind of broadening as, as necessary.
And will concessions be stopped while the movie's on?
So we will continue with concessions until about thirty minutes prior to the end of that. So someone can go in and out? It could, yeah, to go to the bathroom, perhaps more, so rather they do have a good concessions.
Well, I'm just trying to think of how long there's gonna be drinking going on. Okay, so, um, I, I didn't realize how complicated it was in terms of the movies. Cause I thought frankly that you might be able to run a kid's movie during the day and not have the liver snails during the day and then we can have it be adult night at night, but it sounds like that's not.
No, I wish it, I wish it was, um, but there is, again, the, the contracts are as long as the liquor license short. They are very serious about making sure they get paid and in a way, at my point of sales, suppose automatically gets downloaded into their system, so they know exactly how many tickets I sold that moment, that day, that. And so it is, it is, I think it's hard to make money even on their end, if that makes sense, so. We do, we just have to go off of their rules and my hope is that we'll have a chunk of a weekend here and there, that there's like, okay, well, I'm not missing out on this big movie, so let's do something for the town here, let's bring in something different.
So here's a question for you. When my son was young, movie birthday parties were big. He didn't like movies, that, that's another story. Movies are a big birthday thing, so my question would be, would you have different rules for birthday parties, um, regarding the alcohol license?
Yeah. I would say that due to my commitment to the film distributors, I'd probably have limited time to do birthday parties and it likely would happen on Saturday in some mornings. Um, is the way I kind of picture it, except for maybe during the day, during the weekday. Um, if it's past eleven and they wanna buy a beer, I would like to be able to offer that to them, but I don't picture it changing the dynamic. In fact, it will be easier to control, there will be thirty people in there and so on.
One more thing, I'd just like to add on the good news front. The state has started a program specifically for single movie theater, single screen movie theaters. They are, um, willing to finance, actually I think give grants for brand-new, um, screens. And so, um, I have given the link to Bob Warner, I saw him in a meeting, and I'm hoping he passes it on to you. If not, if you could leave your email address with me, I'll send it to you.
Send it.
It's, it's, it seems like it's a pretty generous program, if you need to move.
The only thing that I read about that that seemed like we hit is the new ownership part, cause it's like a post-COVID thing where we weren't up, we were struggling during that time, Brett was involved.
Yeah.
So, um, the new ownership thing kind of I think cancels.
Well, it seemed like it was a new program starting now.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll, I'll take into it.
I would, if I were you, you never know. That'd be great.
Very.
Thanks for joining us guys, and thank you for taking on this venture. It's a really important drive of your, your business and the heart of it. Pleasure meeting them this morning at the Chamber of Commerce, um, meeting and hearing this presentation. Uh, I think you're hearing that the, we're all very excited about this. Our concern is, it's a family venue. And, um, and we all take that responsibility, both the liquor distribution extreme seriously. I think you have demonstrated that you have taken it just as seriously and have done, you know, meeting with placement, figuring out a way to make sure. Um, yeah, I talked to, so we, we have our, um, our insiders, our kids who all grew up on the theater. And I was talking to my son, he's like, I hope he's, he's a grown man, he's so cool to be able to come home. He's like, we're not gonna go having beers, but we're gonna go grab a beer, watch a movie with our friends and go hang out on Friday night, you know? Like, they're excited and that's, you know, the next generation of folks that don't even have kids yet. Um, so I, I'm excited about this, I'm, I'm a little nervous about, you know, like, I think Tony brought us some big points about, you know, just being really, really careful because, um, you know, it's, it's, it's a family entertainment place. And I, I have a sense of, I'm not too worried about you guys doing it, but just to reiterate how serious we are about this and, um, and see how good we, we really truly hope that this is out of the, um, out of the park for you guys. Uh, because of them and the good of the town. Um, questions, I, you know, I think this, it is a very small, it's less than five hundred square feet concession here as you drafted in the backup. Um, is there any, I mean, I do expect a long run, so, um, what's the, what did you say, a hundred and twenty capacity in the theater? Or is that something like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
But depending if we take out a couple more seats, but yeah, not under one forty.
Okay, obviously it's handicapped accessible in the courtyard, then you go come in through the courtyard, or? No, so it's the same ramp that you'd use if you opened the old movie theater, that ramp that kind of does this on the left side of the old ramp? And they can go right that way and then into the concession, and then you built the ramp actually inside the movie theater to gain a little bit more space in the concession area. So the ramp goes straight down, we moved a few chairs, so there's, there's probably six handicap spots, easy. It's a very wide center, um, now.
Um, so, when I read this stuff, I don't like the idea. You know, we've all been going there for years and I would say probably eighty percent of the revenue should probably generated by kids. Fifteen and under, you know, I, I've brought my kids up there more times than they're tenfold. So I, I don't love the idea of serving alcohol, which is why I was concerned about what are you, what are you trying to do here? Um, you know, I don't, you know, if, if it's a kids' theater, I don't think there's really even necessity to sell alcohol. Obviously you're competent, you're digging seriously, I appreciate all that sort of stuff. I'm just concerned about the need to do that, because I think the movie theater in a, in a small town like us that has one screen, your audience is kids, you know, it's not, it's really not gonna be the adults going out, you know, to see Flash. Um, so I think there's a little bit of miss disconnect in terms of wanting alcohol there and your main audience to be younger kids. You know, I have comments, as Karen just mentioned, we take it very seriously, you, I can see you guys, you're not gonna, you know, be careful, you don't serve any other age children, I was just gonna say that, but I, I'm I'm a little concerned more, I can't remember what the answer was, but the amount of revenue that you're hoping to generate from alcohol sales, where I think most of your patrons are gonna be younger people, I don't, I think there's a disconnect there for me. So that's why I just wanna talk through that with you, um, and understand. Well, I mean, I know other places do it, I've been to the Hanover Theater recently, they sell it there, but there's, there's eight or ten things and there's always some adult stuff going on there, where you're gonna be pinning pigeon toll for, for two or three weeks with a movie, right? And sometimes it's gonna be Disney and sometimes it's gonna be, oh, some other, some other movie that, that's more attracted to adults, so. I'm just not seeing the focus on alcohol for the success of this venture.
So, uh, a couple things going back there, um, I think it is fair, like it's a, it's a total fair question. It's also fair that it's not a new trend in the industry, right? Like almost any theater that's revenue-focused is looking at alcohol. Same thing with a restaurant, most of their sales coming, a lot of the sales coming from, from alcohol. I would push back a little bit on, um, that it's just for kids. I think this theater impacts a lot of people that are not just kids. I, I can't tell you the amount, I mean, above us is pretty much a retirement theater for the most part, in that building. Adam sits on, sits on the board of that, uh, there's a lot of people that wanna go there and have a drink, right? I have four kids, going into high school, they're going to kindergarten, I can tell you what, if I'm gonna watch a Disney movie, I'd like to have a beer. And so, and I would also argue that, let's say it's only ten percent. It's still ten percent more of the, of the business that will, will struggle financially. One hundred percent it's got, it's got one screen, so even if it's fifty percent, sixty percent, thirty percent, at the end of the day, it's a percent that's gonna be able to keep that theater like a long-term lasting revenue stream. You know, as far as it being a kids' place, I can tell you guilty as charged, walking into a theater at high school, I'm not gonna go buy the Fenway beer and try to get away with it, I'm probably gonna sneak it in, right? If, if, if we were really trying to get away and do some, you know, illegal, legal stuff. So for us, it's pretty simple, it's, if we can sell a handful of drinks at a theater and double the cost of maybe what comes in from a break-even standpoint, it's kind of a no, it's a no-brainer to us. So I think it affects people that are coming back from college, that wanna link up with their buddies, that grew up in this town and are upset that the theater's been shut down for years. I think it helps the younger families with younger kids that can go in there with their kid, have a beer, enjoy a Disney movie, I think it helps the, the retirement community that their kids are long gone and maybe they go with their grandkid or, I mean, I wanna go to the, the small local theater and watch a play or a movie and have a glass of wine or a drink. I think it's a, I think it's a differentiator, I think it makes it fun and exciting. And I can tell you there's gonna be way less alcohol issues at the single theater that closes the last year at ten-thirty than the surrounding drinking that's happening in the heart, so.
Yeah, and I understand, I'm, again, I'm not, I'm not heavily in favor of it, but I understand all your arguments, right? Like you said, I sell twelve beers, I just made a hundred dollars more than I would've paid if I didn't do it, I get, I get that. And if that's part of your model, that's one thing, if it's fifty percent of your revenue, then that's another thing. Cause I don't know how it's gonna, how it's gonna generate that. Uh, but that's, that, you know, I'm not here to tell you how to run your business, I'm here to do what I think is, you know, the best decision for the town. And I don't think it's a terrible decision one way or the other, I just don't, I wasn't jumping up and running cheering saying, oh, we're gonna alcohol at the theater. I love the theater back, I love the fact that you're investing in, in town, investing in not only the office space, but regenerating that, I think it's great, I think my kids will go. But I'm just having a little, you know, a little disconnect in terms of what the alcohol is really there for. As you're saying, you know, a little bit more point blank now, it's, we're just trying to get a little bit of revenue out of it to capture every dollar that we can that comes in the door. Now that makes a little bit more sense to me than, you know, than a party venue where, you know, ten, five couples are gonna go out and get, you know, drink ten, ten beers and watch, you know, movies. And I just don't, I just don't think that's what's gonna happen. I think it's gonna be just like all of us, as we, we're gonna drop our kids off there, you know, and, and we're gonna run to dinner at, at the galley. Um, you know, so, um, and it's that, that's what's going through my head right now in terms of whether I think that that, that venue needs that, um, that type of.
Since we, since we started, since we, uh, you know, bought the building from, from Bob and we told everybody we're keeping the theater, the amount of adults and people reached out from the community has been overwhelming, like overwhelming. And the amount of people that are trying to even every day to, I was down at our office, I was knocking on their door, trying to get in, trying to use the bathroom, was this where we get in to get our tickets? Like, it's all, and then we're hearing all amazing stories from people like, hey, I remember growing up and going to Millworth and getting tickets to go to movie, to the movie theater, like we have to get creative here. Like that's, and this gives us the opportunity to be creative and to be able to keep it open, not be back here in a year saying, hey, we have alcohol. Right?
I completely understand it, I'm just trying to tell you what my mind is coming from and, uh, warning you.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, I'm not overly thrilled, but I understand why as well. I think what has helped me this evening is to understand that it's really just, like it, it's not like you have a huge bar going on there, you know, it's a cooler of retail sales, if you will, obviously same aside. Um, so that makes me feel a lot better about it, um, that it's not a full-fledged, not farm where adults are hanging out or you go into the movie, get some more, combine taking. So that, I'm, I'm more comfortable with it than I was that six-thirty today.
I'll open up guys, Bob?
Yeah, I, uh, there's a couple things that haven't been said, just in English, I've bought Warner, um, uh, formally from Millworth, so I wanted to first of all speak to the character, the people that Bob needs to be there. Matt's pretty much covered that. This is a great asset for the town, thank these people for their service and, um, it's great. Having owned the movie theater for close to forty years, as, as an owner of a business, we're not, we never ran the business, we were owner of the real estate. But we learned a lot from, first of all, having Patriot Sentiment was running a theater and then from Brett Hardy, and I dealt with these guys all the time. The movie industry has changed so much that the, the movie theaters have to reinvent themselves. What happened fifteen years ago is everyone got a big screen TV, surround sound. And then came, you know, DVDs, first it was blockbuster, but now it's streaming. And what the movie industry did, which absolutely killed the movie theater business, was instead of giving the, the first release movies to, you know, when, when Star Wars came out, the movie theater had that for months. They had it for four or five months. No, that wasn't released on DVD or, or VHS or anything. Those days are gone. Now we have, most of, Disney's one of the biggest offenders, they release movies the next day after it's in the movie theater. Sometimes they'll hold it for three weeks. So the movie theater business has changed. And if you look at theaters like, let's say the Devon Theater, which is kind of a boutiquey kind of theater that's being successful now, while all the other theaters are going out of business, they serve alcohol, they serve some food and it's a place to go, it's not a place to go that we're gonna go get drunk, we're gonna, you know, party and, and listen to entertainment late, late at night. You go, you can have a beer, it's a reason to go there. And that's what the movie theater needs, they need more reasons to go there. This town, unfortunately, the kids have supported it, but you, I could, Brett Hardy never made any money there. Patriot left the prison, didn't make money, the rent was always nothing, that wasn't the issue. It was, it, it's just that we need reason to get the people to go to the theater. If it's, if it's alcohol or beer or whatever, that, you know, if I can go out with Tony and, and, and another couple or someone else with my wife and we can get a drink, it's just another reason, it makes it, you know, fun, a funny thing to go out. But, but that whole industry, and it's, we're all able to do this in two seconds, is to Google what happened to the movie theater industry. The movie theater industry is decimated, and that's why Hanover opens with liquor, that's why Denham has it, and it's, it's happening everywhere. And, you know, I, I speak to these guys because, for these guys, 'cause I know who they are, Adam came to me over a year ago looking for space, he was expanding his company. The fact that he wanted to open the theater, I think is a wonderful thing. I hope it succeeds. 'Cause Brett, even at zero rent, that we offered him the same thing, wasn't gonna open again. We can't make money here. We, so it needs to have something to get the people to come, something more than, like, I, I wrote on the board, more than the raisin ants and popcorn. You know, that, that's what it's been in the past. You know, and I hope the town supports it. Because we have, it's there, they've taken the time, they're not, they are going to open it, but with whichever way you vote, I understand. You have a, you have a responsibility that I've understood, being in the restaurant business since nineteen eighty-four, of handing out licenses, and you don't take it like we never have. But I think you have, if anyone, if you give it to anyone, I don't know, I couldn't find a better group to give it to, so. It's, it's worth looking at, everyone can Google it, what happened to the movie theater industry, and, and, and for it to survive, it has to change.
Thank you. Could you, a moment in the back?
Hi, I'm Captain Baldwin, I live at one twenty-four Front Street, so I'm a next-door neighbor. Um, I totally disagree with you, I think a lot, I'm saying, well, I have no kids, I will go to the movie theater, and I'll be there with my girlfriend. I do have some concerns being in the butter, um, and it's because of the past experience I was given in a butter's notice that the Hyruming is going to be a nice Irish family-landed, um, place with a little cayenne to secure my air. I'm here in Stone Temple Pilots at twelve o'clock, and I'm here at one thirty in the morning. So, I don't sleep on the weekends anymore because of the Hyruming and just respect for the rest of the people. I have coexistence since two thousand and six with the Galley, Rivas, Chopsticks and Fork, now the, um,
If I could just keep you focused on the theater.
Right, no, but the point is, it's noise. And we can't have a reactive police force, we need a presence down there now. I call all the time because of noise, because of people drunk, or, you know, just at one o'clock in the morning. And so, we can't just have a reactive, you know, I call, and I, it's noisy, and then they don't come because, they come and they're like, oh, it's not noisy anymore. It's noisy. So, my, I have a clarifying question, where are people basically in the movie theater?
So, if, if you're comfortable kind of visualizing that building, the way left side is where Silverstorm was, that's the entrance. The next door over, so if you can picture those big, um, kind of coming soon signs.
So, what used to be the main entrance?
No, the main entrance is O two X's main entrance, so it's actually a very, it's a single door. So, single door for Silverstorm, single door is the next door, and then you've got the gigantic staircase entrance, which is,
But it goes out to the, to the,
Goes out to those stairs, to, to the parking.
It's very, it's ten feet away from the, you used old main entrance.
So, it's the, the parking garage, sorry?
No, 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 I don't know, the main, like, where CBS is.
Comes back on us, it's a U-turn.
It's a U-turn, you're going, you're going in this way.
We're not going into your garage.
Well, I'm, I'm the deck that's in between the two. But that's my concern is just, if there's going to be more entertainment at night, you also have to coexist with the residents, as you said, it's mainly people over sixty-five or above you. Um, we're probably over fifty-five, I think I'm the third youngest of fifty-five. So, and, because we're the only people that really can afford to die here, or, you know, we're, all we do is give taxes. We're a single, you know, there's one person unit, so I'm supportive of this, but I also want the select four to be very cognizant of the challenges that the residents are facing now with all the entertainment. Actually, it's not all the entertainment, it's allowed Hyruming, and I'm, I'm making that clear because I don't want them to expand into knownness and that become a bar one day, you know what I'm saying?
We're, we are, we are, we, O two X is, O two X is a, just headquarters, nine to five, they are our primary source of income. This is literally a give-back, and we're not, I, again, we're four kids, two kids.
No, but I want you to be aware of movies, you've got the drums, it's coming out.
I don't think we're gonna have that problem, the theater's closing at, did you say ten, ten thirty?
There are letters, there are letters.
So that's the end of the movie, is at ten thirty?
Theater closes at eleven.
The, the bar closes at ten thirty, and the movie ends around eleven.
And that's at the beginning, it could be at seven P M.
But I can acknowledge you, you know, that is a commercial area, and there is,
And a misuse area.
Right, which has a commercial component, and there's always gonna be some noise then. I'm not saying that one in the morning you should be listening to Stone Temple Pilots.
Okay, that's on record, I want that on record. That's what I'm concerned about, it's the voice lead.
Thank you. Nico from Sancho?
Nico from Sancho, Preserved Street Chief Justice, Christian Highway. Uh, I'm here in support of the applicants, um, I think bringing the movie theater back is a tremendous work for the town, uh, point blank. Um, like Tony and so many others, yes, my kids love going to the movie theater, they miss having it. As a parent, it stinks having to drive all the way to Hanover when I can drop them off in the harbor, and yes, go for a, a beer next door at the galley or go for a walk in the harbor and come back to the movie. So it is nice to have an outlet for the kids, and I'm sure that the theater will be an outlet again for the kids in our town, which is fantastic. But, uh, as a parent who is of legal, legal drinking age, to be able to have a, a beer at the movie theater while I'm watching a movie on date night without my kids would be fantastic. To be able to go with other couples and watch the more adult, uh, movies would be excellent. And, uh, like, uh, Bob said, like others have said, the, the marketplace currently probably just doesn't work. And so, in a sense, even though the, the profit margins that the board is questioning, um, I, I haven't done the numbers, these guys have. Uh, and if they say that this is gonna help them to hit that break-even point, I think, unless I'm mistaken, from, from what you guys have talked about, it's, this is not really a profitable venture in any capacity. This is really just getting to break even with the, uh, permit that they're requesting, so that they can get back to the time of the theater's existence. Um, so, it's not so much about how they can, uh, fleece the residents for extra money or, or scramble for extra alcohol in the harbor. I think it's really an opportunity to allow for them to be creative, so that in those times when it's, uh, applicable, they can actually make a little bit more, uh, money to get towards, uh, towards their break-even point. I think that's important to note, because I think that without this, uh, application going forward, probably they run into more and more trouble keeping it open, which means then it becomes a further dead space in that area. Uh, so that's one point. The other thing is that, I think, when you look at, um, Citu as a cultural, uh, destination, we have plenty of things, and it can be argued positive or negative, that alcohol's part of our society, but I think we have alcohol in Citu in plenty of locations. And I think that the movie theater is frankly the, the least detrimental place that I can imagine alcohol being issued. I think that when I go to a movie theater and I have even a long walk of, I don't know, two and a half hours, and most movies are, are shorter, shorter you say, but when you have a long walk, how many times am I gonna be able to go out into the lobby and get a beer? I don't see the, the alcohol becoming an issue at all in this location relative to any other place in Citu where you can legally go get alcohol. So I think that if I can go and have a good time, have one or maybe even two beverages during a two-hour period, I think that the steps that the applicants have taken to make sure that it's certified, to make sure that they have a single point of access that's narrow, that's watchable, that has, uh, deterrents like cameras for the kids to make sure that it's a very serious, respectful approach to alcohol use, uh, is a very applicable location to have. So, um, as a, as a, you know, person who's been active in schools, or as a parent, as a doctor, as a resident, I'm very much in favor of this. I can't wait to go to the movies again in Citu, uh, and so I'm very vocally in support of these applicants, and like, uh, Brian has said, uh, sorry, Bob has said, the, their character speaks for itself, and I think that they've taken every step that they can to put their best foot forward and make sure that, that the concept of having alcohol in, on their premises and in, in their control to sell to the residents, uh, they've taken every step possible to show they're gonna be serious about it.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? This is Berban.
Anne Berban, ten ten, Chris Moon.
Any other questions?
Yes, early on this evening, there was discussion about trying to encourage businesses in town. And this is a point well-taken, that we are encouraging these people to be here, we need them, the harbor needs them. I'd love to have them in more Citu. We need this movie theater, people go over to, um, the Loring Theater, one spring. I don't know what they serve over there, but I mean, that place is ready to burn down. But that said, this is something that is good for the town, and I think these people really have their ducks in a row. We want more business in the harbor, and here people is.
I think everybody in this room, everyone up here agrees with that also. And as you know, it's our job to debate all the things from all angles, and that's what we do. Again, I don't know what the rest of the board feels, I'm, I'm not thrilled with it, but I'm not violently opposed to it either. You all seem very competent, you're taking it seriously, you're very professional people on it, you've got your own business running right next to it, so I can't imagine you letting it get out of control. But I think it has to be stated, it's, it's the elephant in the room, we gotta talk about it, we're serving alcohol in an area that's gonna be, you know, a kid's only space, so. And, any other discussion from the board, any other last comments, more?
Um, we did hear from the applicants that they are looking to serve alcohol only until ten thirty P M. So I would recommend that if you would vote with the motion that we modify the time, um, to be ten thirty and not eleven P M. So, we, you know, it's clear that it's shut down at that time. They don't, you know, just listening and thinking and recalling, it's unfortunate because you won't be able to hire teenagers or employ them here to serve alcohol. So that is a, that is a detriment, unfortunately, 'cause movie theaters historically have always been a great place for teenagers to have a first job.
So, just to clarify, I always under the impression that if we have a twenty-one-year-old, happened to be over twenty-one, manager on the site that I could, could have, say, my four, four fifteen-year-old son.
I don't know, I mean, I don't know the rules, but I, I, I have no idea.
He would not be, like, he would not be rushing.
No, the restaurant rules, the rules, I'm sorry guys, I'm a one-bower, so.
Yeah, please.
Um, Brian, as long as they're, I'm Brian Hunan from Galley, twenty-sixth Turn Road. As long as the people that are touching the fruit, the, the alcohol are of eight, are eighteen or above, you're fine. Kids can work in the theater, just can't, they can't, they can't sell their, or they can't, they can't even, and they're the guests after it, so.
So that's, uh, the plan was to have two people, two people.
Yeah, it's like hanging out from the center, and you go there, and somebody else has to go bring it.
We just can't handle those.
Okay, that's, that's how I'm pushing it.
I just wanted to bring that up, it's just, it's a small space and,
No, I would, I would like to have two people, one of age doing the alcohol, one being the front kind of runner, doing the sales, and then having that, that twenty-one-year-old or eighteen-plus be, um, be the touching the alcohol hand you know.
Okay.
Darren, you can have the last comment, oh, Lauren?
Just one comment, if they stop selling alcohol at ten thirty, the person will still be drinking the alcohol all the way. So, the liquor license needs to cover after the last sale of the alcohol.
Good point.
Wait, you just said it needs to cover until the last sale of the alcohol.
For the last, for the person to drink the alcohol. So if they, if they stop serving at ten thirty, and the person goes back into the movie theater, um, they have to finish their drink by letter.
So it's not a good sale, it's a good, uh,
It's about consumption, not,
The consumption of alcohol in the process needs to be.
Okay, gotcha.
It's hard to do it.
So as,
It'll be like the seven thing, you know? All right, Ken, wrap us up.
I, I just wanna make note, um, for the record, that the board did receive a number of letters, um, from, uh, folks that were, um, I think, I think all of them must have been wrong, I think all the letters were, um, in support of, of this. Um, including, I don't know, that the chambers sent a letter after their meeting this morning where they voted to support, um, they have the same, similar concerns, but they were, um, in support of them getting a liquor license from the Citu Chamber Congress.
Anyone need any more discussion on this? If not, you have the motion.
Um, move, go ahead.
Move to approve a chapter twelve, is that chapter twelve?
Section twelve.
Section twelve, all al, alcoholic beverages general on premise liquor license at the Rio Harbor Theater LLC located at one Millworth Plaza, Suite fourteen, with hours of operations Sunday through Saturday, eleven A M to eleven P M.
Okay, well, further, can we all begin?
But did we?
All right.
Yeah, we hadn't talked about the vitriol a bit easier than the alcohol, right?
Does anyone want any discussion on the others? Are you all good?
Okay, okay. Move to approve a new common vitriol law license for the Rio Harbor Theater LLC contingent upon Board of Health approval with hours of operations Sunday through, Saturday, eleven A M to eleven P M. And finally, move to approve a new movie license for the Rio Harbor Theater LLC with hours of operations Sunday, Sunday through Saturday, eleven A M to eleven P M.
Second, Camp Hill, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, none, it is unanimous, five to zero. Best of luck, guys. When do you, when do you, what you,
And you.
You, this summer maybe?
Yeah, June is my goal, but I have to, I can't understand.
Good work.
Congratulations, guys.
Okay, so we've done that, we did Malayanese, so the next topic is a discussion vote, outdoor seating in the galley. Brian, Brian?
Everyone, Brian, how are you?
Not too bad. My general manager.
Brian, how are you? So we had a conversation, actually, it had been a month ago, before town meeting, when COVID allowed us to re-up our offices for outdoor, outdoor dining. And we discussed a lot of the venues in town, and yours came up. And there was a couple of people in here that had some opposition to it using of the parking spaces. And we kind of put our goal, I got in touch with you, told you what was going on, and wanted you to come in and be able to tell us what you're thinking about doing. I know you're redoing the galley right now. You still want the spots, how are we gonna do it? And what's your whole thought on it? And let's see what the, what the other side of the coin is, and we'll go from there.
Sure, absolutely. My biggest before start, one of the things the board had tasked me with was to see if we could find something that could mark the spots that was easily movable, yet met Kevin and Chief Thompson's requirement to be safe for people sitting there. And I can tell you, we looked and looked and looked, and we did not find anything that would be both those lines.
So that was my idea of kind of, what can we do to keep spots open during the day, but closed at whatever time we wanted to with some sort of protection? Without impacting the body movement.
Yeah, I think, I think for that safety aspect is that, you know, you put something more permanent and it's safe, right? And you put something, you know, that's easily taken down, it can be easily taken down by a car, or by anybody passing by, so. To offset that, I think that's kind of defeats the purpose of what we're doing.
Right.
Plus, the, 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 the the actual time we do business out there on the patio is pretty much during the day and the early afternoons, as opposed to the evenings. Now, I think we do more business down there for lunch outside than we do for there. Because it's generally nicer out on outside of the street at that point, you know? So if we're doing it, I'd like to do it all. Um, it is taking up a couple of spots in Glass, I think the first year we did it was three spots, and went down to two and a half, we're talking about two spots right now. I got a, there was a bunch of people in support of us as well, I already forwarded, forwarded to you guys, but I've got extra copies right there. And to speak to what's going on in town, you know, I've been working on our Kancher anniversary in Galley. And since we've been there, you know, the town has turned into a great, you know, destination for restaurants. We're super happy about all the restaurants serving in town. And it's been fine, and it's great feeling down there on the weekends, people often only one little restaurant or the other. They might come into me for an appetizer, and go to chopsticks and forks, end up on a salt librarian. And it's a good vibe, and with the actual fact that the other restaurants are allowed to serve outside, I believe I should be too. And it's, it's unfortunately, um, we can't do it on our sidewalk due to the size. You know, our sidewalk is a little narrower than the restaurant ones right now. But if, if they're allowed to, we should be allowed to as well.
Okay, um, so is it more, um, this is just a picture of the front of your.
That's our assessment software, that's a picture from last year that shows where the, the seat was.
And so is that two spots or three?
About two and a half.
Last year, we had about two and a half, yeah.
Uh, it extended, did not extend beyond the end of the building.
Right, and what is your intention for this year? Is it the same, you'd like to get two or two and a half spaces?
That would be great, that would be great. Um, you know, it's like, uh, it's like two hundred quarter. If you have a small compact car, you can still absolutely park one of those spots.
Right.
Um, but, but yeah, in order for us to get them all four tables out there, we need about two and a half spots.
And same, we would plan to get the same jersey barriers for the protection.
Yeah, we use the water filled ones, um, the concrete ones were really pretty nasty looking, and they take the crew over half day to move, so we purchased some COVID ones, they're filled with water, they're plastic, they're better looking. They provide some, not quite the same level of safety as the concrete ones, uh, but they're better looking, they're easier for the crew to move, call the chief. P D W C superintendent Phil, they provide the level of protection that we need there.
But they were there.
I told you the last year.
They weren't removed at all until the end of the year.
No, right, yeah, yeah.
I don't know, I mean, Memorial, they are true.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're easy to move when they're empty, but they get filled with water.
Right.
To drain them and fill them every day, I don't think we want to use that much water still. If you start draining them at night, they wouldn't be able to the morning anyways.
Right.
Okay, what questions do we have for Brian?
I have one for Brian, I have one for Jim.
Okay.
Just curious, by the way, tempted to see your reservations.
No, come on in, first, take a look through.
When we deal with public sidewalk use for identity and for salt society, is there any additional expansion of taxing, charging, anything like that, because that's a public way? So it's nothing, nothing that we charge them or?
So can you explain, is it, is the sidewalk just wider there so they have free feeding space?
So at, at salt side in Hibernian, there's no parking spots there. So the sidewalk is significantly wider, so you can put tables on the sidewalk and still have the required space for handicap accessibility going by. In front of the galley, because the side is a popular thing, so those sidewalks are smaller. Uh, we went and looked at it, Kevin and I, last week, and you can't get a table in front of the galley and still have room to get by with a wheelchair or someone on crutches.
Um, and are you proposing just four tables, Brian?
Whatever we could fit out there, depending on the tables themselves, you know?
Something you've got six or five or six, and then you bring it down to five, to five.
Five or six, yeah.
I mean, I can say, I, like you mentioned, Brian, I just love the atmosphere in the, in the, you know, you said the vibe down there, when, when everybody's out there on a nice summer night, going, walking down Main Street. I love it when they close the street off, frankly, because we moved for those hours. The town was just so alive, and people were going down there, and the whole area was active, with all of this stuff. You know, I know we're not talking about closing the road again, although at some point I'd like to maybe consider that again, but you guys. But, but I just, I just really liked the fact that it drew people to the area and it kind of pulled in the underside of the, you know, everything else is down towards Lucky Finn, and you, by you being outside there, you kind of drew people down that way more. And I just think it was a great festive, active area, and I, I like that.
Absolutely. A couple of people, I even had a lady from the condos behind me, and I mentioned that she's not so excited about coming back out onto the street itself, she's still not a hundred percent comfortable going into restaurants. Because she's like immune compromised or whatever else, so it's an option for people who still aren't a hundred percent comfortable going inside, that they can eat.
Yes, so this is an interesting request, because you, you have a physical barrier that the other restaurants don't, so that's the concern. But what's interesting to me is a lot of times something will be proposed, and there'll be a whole lot of people, like saying this, and a whole lot of people saying, and most people are on one side. This has been really balanced to people that like it, don't. What's interesting to me though is our economic development commission and the chamber this morning, I put it to them, I said that we were having this discussion tonight, and that the folks that, you know, spend time thinking about what's good for the whole harbor are all in favor. For the same reasons they mentioned, Mr. Chair, that it creates vitality and all of that. I personally feel that, you know, some people may say, well, how come he gets to use parking spaces? And I think the flip of it is true, is why would we penalize one business in harbor when there are now such the structural account to do that? So this is current point, not anything to do with this discussion. I think that after we retire Mr. DiNani, that next season we might want to talk about, you know, putting some policies in place. I think that on-street and, and sidewalk seating is here to stay, and it's good for the, it's good for the vibrant state, it's good for the businesses. And, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go Boston on it, but, you know, there are, there are costs associated to the, to happen, if we do that.
Right, absolutely.
Um, but that's a discussion for another day, that I think we really, you know, I, I don't see this going away anytime soon, so we should have that conversation.
We're all for that, you know, in the country.
Right, well, I mean, and quite frankly, if you're the, if that section, you know, we're not using, like we have, and everyone's again, if a lot goes to your business for the season, then maybe we think about a potential expansion of that sidewalk or something, if it's not. I mean, there's, there's a lot of conversations. Um, but I think we did look to receive a lot of correspondence that wasn't just Brian texting, or we did get correspondence from a lot of variety of people in town, that, um, the complaints were mostly in my good, I saw, were in Emily. So I don't know if you've thought about doing any enhancements to the security itself. I mean, I don't want you to go all New York, but you go to New York and say, holy cow, we're even in Boston.
Right.
Um, you are getting a public, um, way for no cost, that it might be good to.
My, my won't speak to that, is, and, and again, you go down to Plymouth, and they've got the town, they're worked with restaurants and that, and they're built up their decks and covered each. They took the, the, um, the security area, and they covered them all with, you know, um, cranes and everything else to make it look better. But that somewhat takes away from the safety of seeing something that's white or orange or concrete in front of you when you're driving. And I think that, you know, not that we can't make it prettier, we absolutely can, but I think that, you know, adorning it with a lot of stuff and sort of camouflaging it might not be the best thing to do when you're the only one in, on the street that has, because you're literally that visible, right? Then something that sort of sticks out and looks like it's a safety barrier, because that's, I think, the, I think the safety of our, the safety of our customers is the utmost important thing.
Well, I can disagree with that a lot, but I think that there are, I'm just saying, because of those we were not in support, that I heard, that was the most common, because it looks, it looks unpleasant when you drive down Front Street, that there's just this thing sticking out.
Yeah, and, and, and again, just because it's one, I think, I do somewhat agree with that, don't get me wrong. But I think that unless we do the whole thing, or it kind of has to stick up, you know, people wanting in and parking out of there, you don't want to camouflage it so much that you can't see it.
I'll get those and pop those.
Yeah.
Um, and I forget what the other, the other complaint was, oh, the other, the other complaint was, how come you don't make? And how come, you know, why do you get to do this? And I, I just think that if that's an understanding of you have unique space without.
All right, I think that can be said the other way, right, why again, and not me? Serve outside, why can't that? I understand it's, it's, sidewalk is also wrong.
Oh, yeah. Um, yeah, I think, you know, especially with the, the chamber and the E D C, I think that it's in support that we looked at them, and they're put on the stuff, man.
I appreciate their support.
Karen?
Yes, um, I'd like to suggest we have a lot of very creative people in town, artistically creative, and I don't see any reason why there can't be some way of making that more attractive, because it's ugly. But more importantly, I was like this on it, I've been like this on it, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. Until today, I'm driving home from panel, or on NPR, there was an interview with a man who just wrote a book about parking, of all things. And basically, he was making the case that we need, and some people are gonna kill me when I say this, less parking, not more parking. And some ways of dealing with things are taking away parking spaces and making them more attractive, that they're not just a space for cars, that they're a space for people. And I think we're trying to do that here in this town, so I'm now weighing much more in favor of, yeah, let's get rid of a couple of cars on there for whatever the season is, whether it's all year or whatever. Um, and like I said, I do think there is a case to be made for it could be more attractive, I believe it, I know it.
Absolutely.
So, um, that's everyone else has basically said.
So I'll give you, um, that was the easiest yes in the world a month ago. Love it when it's outside, I think it's amazing. Also then, Mr. Icy and I, I want to talk to the other businesses around there. I couldn't find one who was supportive. And it was clear, and they asked for spaces, they don't ask spaces, some of these other businesses, and I'm gonna get who was in trouble. But it was clear, you know, for them, the spaces were lifeblood, and shame on us for not possibly thinking and doing it more aggressively for side streets. I don't think we can do it for. But it was like we were playing favorites, it was clear from all the different folks, from one then down. And, um, it, it was so overwhelming, my experience talking to them, that I think, I, at least for this year, and so we addressed something about whether the sidewalk or else we could do, I, I personally can't support it, which pains me, because I think, and I even brought that to folks, saying, isn't this like a, like a honey pot, you're bringing other people in? And that, that wasn't their experience, and that's not what they were thinking. Um, that's, that's not what they were telling me, which was painful, because that's what I would assume, but hey, we're bringing the folks in, it helps the still over, then helps everybody else. Um, that's not what was explained to me, how this works, so, that's Brian.
And the package I sent, I sent out earlier, and the package we have here, several supporters of businesses on Front Street.
Can I just you that day?
Sure.
Do you have something?
I think for me, with the, oh, so, I think for me, that there was, wasn't evident to me who these people were.
Mm-hmm, supporters are.
Yeah, I mean, or obviously it could be friends, whatever, it wasn't in the opinion that they were others, that they were.
Everyone from, um.
Business owners or.
Native, native, thank you, native. Native to Hibernian, Salt Society, Malayanese, we're all in support of it. Um, you know, even, even people who I did not think may be in support of it, which are the condos behind me are in support of it.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, that you're not aware of the same space, but I also, it's probably the timing is when you started your restaurant, it's your, and designing your restaurant, you still have that very outdoorsy atmosphere, and you have the windows set open, so you're still able to provide your patrons with that similar.
So is every, so, so is every restaurant in town, I shouldn't be penalized, because I spent a hundred thousand dollars on windows, when you have a restaurant.
I'm not penalizing you, I'm affording you an opportunity to expand your business that you didn't originally plan. And I have a good idea anyway, to get places.
I get you. No, I get you, I get you, and I, I appreciate, I appreciate it.
So I just, you know, it's hard for me to give up these spaces in an area where parking is difficult. And I just agree with you, I think parking is important for us to bring visitors in from out of town, because we don't have a lot of places, and we're really trying to bring folks into situ. Um, so I think parking is important in, in the harbor. I, I mean, if we could get down to two spaces, I, I think three is egregious, and it's, it just takes up way too much. I mean, it's sort of compromised to me, if you add, um, I agree with the aesthetics, that we'd love to see those updated, that's probably another conversation. Um, it's not contingent upon this, but. But I do think there, it's probably, as this candle says, fifty-fifty, right, of your neighbors, if you will, who support it, who don't support it.
Sure.
I don't think there's a hundred percent approval or acceptance.
No, I, I agree with you.
So I.
I think, uh, like, I can't remember who mentioned it, but I mean, ideally, wouldn't it be great if in the future that there was no parking on Front Street, that the sidewalks are huge, and that people were, you know, more, more of one of those towns where people just go walking down there, and it drives, brings more businesses in there, it gets more people walking down there. And right now, we're kind of hindered, and unfortunately, you're at the side of the street, right, and that feels at the worst.
Absolutely.
Um, and, you know, we've had parking studies, we've had some that say we need some, we've had some that say we got plenty. You know, I think that's, I mean, how many spots are out there? Twelve, fifteen on, on that side of, of, you know, your side of the street, not your side of the street, but your side of, both sides of the street? You know, gosh, wouldn't it be great if we could find that somewhere else, find double that somewhere else, and really just make Front Street, you know, more of a commercial, mixed-use area that was more vibrant? And that's what I think all of our goal is, I think that's what E D C is trying to do, I think that's what the chamber is trying to do. And for us to let the infrastructure hold us back, I mean, it's a different, you said, this is for, for one season of a couple of spots. But I think, big picture, we've got to think about, how do we, how do we invigorate Front Street? And how do we make it, you know, the assailant of the wall, or so, or, 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 or where they're just destinations?
I think, like, I've seen so much change, and, you know, basically, I went and took over Galley ten years ago, was because the other restaurant was, was virtually closed, you know, and bringing, bringing something in town that was a little bit different, that people enjoyed, and from there, some other great restaurants opening up, it's really brought a different feel to that town that I think is beneficial, because I think that, you know, realistically, I know when you're way out from Boston, you can, Quincy's got a lot of restaurants, Hingham, Hingham's got a few, but they're a little bit more spaced out than you get situat. Next town, we is Plymouth. So I think that if you do something like that, which is great, it's on our wish, let's say that will attract more businesses to town, which again is great for commerce, good for taxpayers. And, um, you know, overall, gives it more of a, more of a year-round feel, you know?
Like, anybody in the audience, Anne?
Anne Burbank, Penny Chris Road. I think you've hit on something, Tony, I certainly agree with you.
We agree on the last, my last meeting, we agree.
I think the board's selectmen need to send a directive to E D C, to Chamber of Commerce, and whoever else wants to be involved, to figure out the best way to make Front Street one-way. Benjamin McQuaid back in the sixties suggested that people come down Brook Street and buckle left onto Front Street, and go out and up to the lights, and then take Hazel. So it becomes one big loop. That was fifty years ago. So, you know, some things, and, and you're correct, we need to figure out how to make this work for everyone. I don't care, I don't like losing those two parking spaces or three, I really don't. And I understand where Mr. Glitterich comes from, I agree with his current. But I also agree with you that we need to go forward and figure it out sooner the late, the later. And that direction has to come from you guys. We came to come upon all these little fragmented groups to try to get it together. You all need to give a direction and say, work on it, and you have three months or six months to come back to us, and this is what we recommend, and this is why. and this is what we recommend and we supply.
We should give a directive to the planning board to configure Front Street. I agree with you, and I think it's a good point, and it's not, this isn't an easy question, right? Nobody wants to lose the three spots, right? Workout place there, the, all of them, they, they think that's a vital part to, to their business. Of course, when you wanna use it, they're not open. So that's, that's the dilemma that we're dealing with here, but it's not a movable situation, so. All right, I'll open it up, and then we'll kind of wrap this up. Yes, Kevin Owen, eight zangalian.
I'm here on behalf of the fishing community in Situate, which is gonna kind of take this on a different spin. Brian Rulehand and his restaurants heavily support local seafood, local fishermen. And Brian, everyone in his restaurants, and on all his menus, only supports and only carries local seafood. And the fishing industry is hurting in this town, we're struggling, and it's, I want the select board to understand how important Brian's restaurants are, not just the Galley, but his other restaurants, and what a good business he is in town. And how important it is to the fishing industry, how much we appreciate him, always making sure that if you can't get something local, it's just hard on the menu. You know, we wish more businesses had the same attitude, but we just talked to a few of the guys today, we definitely decided we wanted to have somebody here tonight, and I decided to come. And I know the parking's tough in Situate, but I'm just gonna say this. Brian handed it up, we didn't wanna say it, the Galley was the start of what happened in Situate Harbor. You know, before, before the Galley was open, it really wasn't much there. You know, we kind of got that spur going for the restaurants in, in town, and you kind of made it a fun place, and from there, other places opened up. So I think we need to remember that when it comes to, you know, I'm not saying it's a special accent, he's just getting, he's just getting, the other restaurants are already out. He's just in a weird spot, but I think it's an important thing for us all to remember, that I remember ten years ago, when the harbor was stuff, it looked really bleak, and businesses, you know, there's a lot of empty spaces, and now it's, and now it's booming, and I think we all should remember that. Thanks.
I'm up again. I think people on Sanco, community's three chief judges, Christian Highway. I'm in support of Brian's efforts. I think this brings a good point, that maybe two spots, if it's possible, for Brian to keep it to. It restricts the damage to the other businesses that may be concerned about parking. But overall, I think it's a valuable asset to keeping Brian, the ability to serve the people that want more outdoor seating in the harbor. We have a very short season here, we all know that. And so more businesses that can have outdoor space in that short season, I think it's really valuable to not just Brian as a restaurant owner, but the harbor in general. I think two spaces is a loss to people who are looking for parking in the harbor. Serving on the Chamber for many years, I think we've talked a lot about parking from times like Heritage Days to other events, road races that we run, all sorts of different things that affect different parking areas. But I think that Brian also is a very responsible business owner in town. I think he's always supportive of Situate, he's always trying to find new ways to support Situate. And I think that he has, he's earned the trust of the community to try and support him when he's looking to try and find ways to, to be more incorporating of the space and public spaces in Situate. So I'm supportive of their efforts for several reasons. In terms of specifically talking about some of the creativity of both the aesthetics of outdoor space, as well as possibly looking at how to minimize impact. It's not something I think can be answered tonight at this meeting, but I, I know a couple of landscape designers that work in, specifically in this space with micro parks and other types of sidewalk public space areas, from Boston to New York. And I'd be happy to introduce Brian to them, that could probably come up with some very creative ways, not only to just dress it up so that it looks nicer. I agree that, that the water barriers are not the most beautiful, you know, pieces of art, but I think Brian would agree with that too. I think his point about safety first is very important. But I, I also think that going forward, there might be ways to create an ease of use to the barriers, even though they're very heavy when they're filled with water. There are different things you can do that can make them fairly accessible to roll out, roll drop, et cetera. So there are things you can do that could be looked at for around the season. There are even movable stages that can be brought up, that may get sidewalk level, so that it's safer to car tires, et cetera, so you have less access to danger. So those are things I think can be looked at, but I think that the select board should be looking at a greater policy in town, to all those types of things. And as Anne said, directing the businesses as a whole rather than waiting. But for this application tonight, they've had outdoor access for the last, fourth season or third season? Third, third season, you're wrong. And so, given that they've had a successful use of that space for the last two years, I think that granting them this application tonight is, is fair, is a continuation of the policies they've seen for those last two short summer seasons. And if there is a, a greater scheme that the select board would want to put in place, I think Brian will be the first to acknowledge, he can take the off-season to look at that kind of policy, and try to figure out how to work with the town as opposed to against any specific businesses. And that's why I think I'm for this application.
Awesome. All right, we've talked a lot, any final comments from anybody?
The only thing that's not clear is how long these will be in place.
Okay. And I think, myself and Jim, we've done in the past, we're basically from, from outdoor dining season starting, which is around now till the first year we went to, we, we at least offered to live till it's over, right, till, till it's cold. And we're, we're talking all around the streets and stuff again.
We, we go to the fall, and then we keep an eye on the forecast, and if Kevin thinks it looks like it's gonna get colder, it might get snow, I call Brian, and we pull him on, if it looks like the weather's gonna be nice, we, we leave him in there a little bit longer.
We obviously saw it as well, what this was
It's a point of art, it's a
Because it should be up by Thanksgiving at the party last, and then, you know, go in the end somewhere.
I mean, I would like to put some dates hard
Yes.
Step past, because the only problem with that is, somebody who writes these little contracts, you know, two people leave, it's, you know, if it's not written down, it just becomes very muddy as to what the beginning, beginning date and end date is, in my mind.
So what do you say from any fifteenth till November?
November first or something.
That's fine.
Yeah, from the back.
People probably aren't getting
That's right. Okay.
You want to limit it to two spots?
Two spots, is that what we're doing?
Yes.
Good.
Question on that.
What's our, just one second, what?
We do use the barriers for other things, so I know we wanna beautify them, but I don't wanna paint them or, or do anything crazy to them, because we do use them for other things in town.
Well, I'm sure we can use plates, we have
Just saying, there's ideas if you wanna
Right, yeah, so I go doodle one.
Yeah, that's a fun time.
Just turn it the other way around. One more point regarding Mars Convent, talking about duration. The others we approved under the current COVID extension guidelines. And I think, I don't have the date of the talk, I have, I think it is twenty twenty-five, but whatever the governor granted, and the state granted, for all the, all of them, not just Brian.
But we have to do that again, since the COVID guidelines are being
They just established
Anybody who wants to
Establish the article
Yeah.
That's why we brought this up in the first place, yeah.
Can't make a decision and say, we're gonna do it forever, they just keep
Oh, I think you're just confusing my words today, I don't like initially COVID.
So just, just to bring that to your attention, that's all.
Okay.
Okay, Brian, did you have anything?
If we are bringing out to two spots instead of three, I know I spoke to Jim about this, but is there any way that I may be able to pick up some small tables by the windows, and still give enough room for it to be handicapped and accessible? Pick up the tables and pick up the spots that I'm losing on the outside?
It's gonna only, it's gonna be up to the board, I don't know if it's bad.
Well, you're only gonna lose four seats, one table. I was looking at the pictures.
It depends on where we, if we do two spots and, and the actual barriers are inside those spots, right? Because the barriers are
They'll be on the line.
They're pretty thick, are they gonna be, are they gonna be in next spot, or are they gonna be in my spot?
You probably have to measure it.
Right on your line.
Yeah.
You know, because I, because if they're doing crouching, I might be on to like, you know, three tables instead of one with five tables. I'd like to know, what I'd like to know is if, if there's a specific amount of room that we need to have to be eighty-eight accessible outside of one? And if I can be inside that with, I mean, small tables? You know, that's it, because I know in parts of that, there's, there's one light post, there's one signpost that's on, right in front of a building that makes a little bit narrower, but the rest of the building, I have probably, you know, eight feet right there from curb to the window, you know, could I take three at all speed?
I'll tell you what, why don't we have you get together with Jim and figure out what this, what the space is on? Jim, you can come back to us and see what
Yeah, just gonna check the block.
You know, my theory is, if you get busy, sometimes people stand out there.
No, you'd absolutely put, you'd put a rope or something.
Yeah, a rope, so
You, you, you definitely wouldn't mind that, you wouldn't leave people out there as we've done in the past.
All right, well, why don't, why don't we start with two spots on the lines? You'll figure out how many tables you can put there, and then a whole other task would be, see how big a small table is, and then talk to Jim a little bit.
Absolutely.
But then, you know, bring it back to us.
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Yes.
Okay.
And may, maybe Kevin can look at that sign doesn't have to be there in that spot, I don't know what it says, but it's in a
It's two-hour parking sign.
Okay.
Or it can go one up.
Yeah, we can't mark this, everybody's
It's a concrete side, it's a concrete side, like, okay.
Yeah, he does, if you have to jack it
You gotta change it for like three-month dining sign instead of two-hour.
I was trying to help out.
He applies that to his tables, it's twice the size, just come on.
Ninety minutes over.
All right. Good, can someone make a motion?
Move to approve the use of two parking spots in front of the Galley for outdoor seating.
From May fifteenth?
Sorry, from May fifteen to November fifteen. Okay.
Do I have a second? Second, Mrs. Campfield, any further discussion? See, none, all in favor? All right?
Aye.
All opposed? What opposition? So four to one in favor, it passes, May fifteen to November fifteen, the two spots, and you'll want to be dealt with.
Thank you very much, much appreciated.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thursday?
All right, now we have a bicycle, creation of a bicycle commission.
Hi.
Hi, you must be Nancy.
I'm Nancy.
Hi, Nancy.
I'm sorry about the paper. Very patient. That's, you do have that, I think it might be a new one. So I've been a resident of Situate Harbor, thirty-five years, and didn't bike much, and all went to Amsterdam last year. I wanted to bike, but I came back, I applied, so I'm gonna bike on Situate, and park, stay all day in Situate. So I could be got a little bit here. I'm here to request that the select board consider creating a biking commission for the town of Situate. Small group of bike enthusiasts, met in May, in April. And we establish some goals and tasks to implement Situate along the biking community. Biking is affordable, healthy, a green method of transportation, and is increasingly popular as an alternative to commuting. Establishing more bike parking and more safe bike routes also helps to avoid heavy traffic and park in these areas. So we discussed this with community leaders, and we discussed this with residents, and everybody keeps shaking their head, yes, this is a problem. Existing committees touch on it, but nothing's really changed in the biking world since, I think, two thousand eight. We had a completed streets project in the Indian Road. So I'm gonna briefly outline these goals, I don't know how tired you guys are, but
Are these the same ones you gave to us?
I think they are.
Yeah, let me, just tell us conceptually what you're trying to do, in terms of, is this for people that are on ten speeds, that are, are trying to get a hundred miles in to get through the thing, or is this just a, you know, like, one of my employees just got back from Amsterdam and mentioned it just today, how vibrant the biking community is, that's more bikes than cars. But it's just people trying to get from A to B, you know, to pick up groceries in a basket, or to get to a restaurant, or something like that. What, what do you, what do you think?
The target market is not the people that are training and going around at high speed. The target market is people that might come from the train station, get off of their bikes, ride into town for the day, go to the beach for the day, go down the
Yeah.
And you're trying to create a bike loop around Situate with some, you know, nice paths out around the cliffs, one-way bike paths, kids, safe to school routes, you know, we really have a great spoke for bike paths, because we have the outer loop, really, that goes by all the schools, churches, we have the inner loop. And then you just establish second, but that's kind of, it's everybody in town. I went downtown, and I saw early on a Monday morning, half the parking is packed, because that's where the employees are, right? So if employees have like racks to park that, maybe they'll park there and not make up the parking space. There are three racks downtown.
Isn't there one at the train station too?
There is one at the train station, this twenty, I don't like it in town. But they're not really where we want people to be, if we wanna encourage growth in town.
So is your proposal to just get a commission together to look at this, and report back to the board and say, here's some ideas?
Yes.
I think there was a group, remember Lisa Benton?
It was the sidewalks, I think, yeah.
Well, they were trying to create this loop that went all, which is trying to make those patterns along the driftway, and then something down there, yeah. So it has been thought about, talked about, pieces have been done, but as you point, I don't know if it's all we have to do. So what does the board think of, you know, we're not making a decision on infrastructure change tonight, but do we wanna get some people together to kind of look at this problem, finish projects that have already been started, and, you know, you know, looking to making it a more vibrant bicycle community? And then
Sorry. So Nancy brought this, this concept up a while ago to visitors and our folks, and I think her timing is perfect. It's, I think you're right, we took away at it, there are a lot of pieces, I know Beach Commission's been, you know, actively trying to find places that the beaches to put racks, the components are there, and the opportunities are there for laying out a plan that makes sense to reduce our dependence on cars in our community. Most of our streets are, are, you know, thirty-five and under already. And that once a plan is in place, that the sources of funding to make improvements down the road are, are, are building, because the state has made a commitment to get more people out of cars. So I think the timing is great, and I really commend you for the work that you've done and the homework on us. And I think putting together a group of people to just focus on this can bring all of those threads together to give us a real next step plan. So I, I think it's great, great idea, and perfect timing, both from an organizational and a financial standpoint.
I agree.
That's it.
That's right with that.
I love it, love the focus on bike repair stations, we'll talk about it for more. I would, I would just, I would humbly ask that we also think about and include mountain bike, mountain bike trails as well. And connect with them, and also think of some of our underutilized off-road as a whole, and also as an economic driver. Hang on, want the tech bar, it's huge, come from all of us. So, yes, love it, fully in support. I would love you to throw in some mountain bikers as well, it really helps.
Yeah, no, it's definitely something that needs to be addressed. I think if we take this as a, we write a charge for the commission, because I would like to ensure that there's public safety officer on the committee, that there's someone from D W on it, that, because what happens when we get these resident committees, they have lovely lofty ideas, and then to execute it becomes more difficult. So I think we just need to take a look at the goals, and create a good charge, so that the composition, we cover all those different departments that would be instrumental in actually making it happen too.
I did reach out to my relation this week, because that's a natural fit, and I was debating whether it may be, it's something to be ragged or whatever. And in speaking with Nick about it, his feeling was they should have a laser. they should have a laser on, they should have input, that it would be more effective if it were standalone. Because it touches, as you say, it, it could touch lots of different departments that, you know, they're, you know, police definitely need to be part of that conversation, track their rules and regs. So I think you're right, the next step is to just flesh out what the charge would look at, but his recommendation was it was standalone.
Good. So Nancy, is this a, is this like a Nancy project, or is there a group, is there a group of people behind you? Like, that.
No, it's not a Nancy project.
Okay.
Um, I have, it's like seven people that we can sit down and talking about it. I didn't want to get too specific or go too far until I thought there was something more to work at. Obviously, the people that, you know, the communities, D W, whatever.
Right.
Reach out to them and say, do you know people that have this passion too?
Well, I think it's, I think it's probably worthwhile to, to take the first step in, in looking at it and seeing if it's what, what's feasible, and having some input from our experts to say yes or no, getting a grasp on the cost of it. I know that when, when we look at these types of things, it's in the tens of millions of dollars. Um, you know, to do, to do big projects like this, but, um, you know, and I guess, how do you, how do you measure demand? Like, do we build something, but we're really not a biking community? You know, I think that's the, that's the.
I don't think that would.
Do we go and they'll come, because I, I mean, I don't know if a lot of people are gonna take the, we always thought people were gonna take the train and come down to Situate and go to where there's a lot of bike golf. And they're gonna go do this, and it just, it doesn't happen. You know, it's just not that, that, whether it's marketing, or whether it's lack of interest, or whether it's, um, lack of infrastructure to help it, I don't know, but.
Um, I, I worked a lot at the town, I mean, the city, they've done this, they've put in twenty-six miles of bike paths recently, and the people will come, you know, if they can do it in the city where it's really busy traffic and all that.
It's a little different, you know, because you have those, you know, the college atmosphere and, and, I don't know, I, I, that's my, it's quite, I don't know the answer, I'm not putting you down as an, I just don't know, but I think we have to have a group that's cognizant of the fact of, hey, we've talked about this stuff for a decade.
Right.
And we kind of fought, like, that bike path that we built on, on the driftway would be packed, and it's, it's used, but it's not packed, but then we got a dog park there and it's, it's drawing people, so.
Yes, it's about a mile and a half on the driftway and a mile and a half on the Yannet, because they don't connect, so.
Right.
That's, that's probably not as used as much for.
Right. But you have to hit a destination too, so if, if you want to use it, like, over Europe, they're actually using it as a mode of transportation, not a mode of exercise or recreation.
Right.
So. Uh, Karen?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think there's a, one of the, um, reasons why people don't ride their bikes more is safety issues. And we do have country roads here in Situate, which makes this even more challenging. If you look at country way, and it literally is a country way, it's not a highway, it's, it's barely a, a road, um. And so we, we have some, uh, physical challenges, but I think if we start from like, a destination to a destination, it's, you know, looking at it that way and trying to make it easier for people, and again, bike racks on both ends or parking and, so I, I think it's, it's gonna be a challenge, but I think it's worth, it's worth doing, and, uh.
Good.
Yeah.
All right, so next step would be, or school would write a charge. That's coming from us, we're coming, do you want to draft something that you think a charge would be? And then bring it to the board, and then we all edit it, does that make sense? And then from there, um, we'll, we'll figure out how many people and what the component of the community is. Kevin?
If I can add, if there is some low hanging fruit or something that we could do, I, you know, we're always open to it. Um, because it could be done in a separate, we have done some bike lanes around town as we, as we've been rebuilding roads. A lot of times what we have to do is, there's property line issues, so it might seem like there should be a bike lane there. Physically, it might be able to get on the road. But I'd invite you to come in and, and talk to our department and feel an overall plan, and we could look at it and assign somebody to take a view of it.
We're just talking about, I know the beach commission is seeing, creating to see. That's, we need to have D W, so, yeah.
Great.
Great. All right, so we'll pull it back to your board, come back to us with a charge, get it to Lorraine. She'll get it to the committee, and we'll get you back on the agenda.
Okay.
Nancy, I consider some samples.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll send you some samples, David, if you don't want.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Samantha.
Thank you. Don?
It's going.
Eight forty five in the nose. Um, Memorial Day events.
Yes, so, um, it's that time of year, um, for, uh, our Memorial Day parade celebration, so, um, again, it's, um, it's started at eight in the morning, um, the, uh, small, uh, kids' engine goes off from the Jehovah Masters and does the ceremony at C. And then during that, uh, we have everyone warm up as usual in the frontier of the town hall between ten and ten-thirty. And then have everyone step off at ten-thirty sharp and get them down, uh, to the, uh, common by, we'd like to get everyone down there and get started around eleven fifteen and get the ceremony going. Um, this year, the guest speaker is, um, Captain Joe Mitchell. He's, uh, captain of the Air Force, uh, was flying, uh, F-15s. Um, distinguished flying cross, um, for his, uh, action in Kuwait in the skies. Also has, um, uh, three air medals, um, air medal for three devices. Um, uh, again, he's just, uh, well-deserved, we'll just put it that way, he's got so many awards, uh, for his, um, bravery in his actions, uh, uh, during his time in. Um, he's also serves on the, uh, governor's advisory council for the veterans services too, so. And then also, uh, we have Lauren Flannel, who, um, will be doing the, uh, national anthem, she's, I think everyone, probably in the town, probably real familiar with her, she's, uh, sang at the Celtics game, Red Sox games, um, so. That will, um, we got her, then, uh, ours is the old Starfather, um, Joe Kelly will be doing, reading the names, we'll have the bells again this year. Um, what else? We've got, uh, the VFW Legion doing the riding squad taps, um, from the high school. We have the two soldiers will be doing the soldiers taps too. And, um, yes, we have the bell, so everything, everything's lining up, it looks good. Again, um, Takte Linda, she's on board, if there is any kind of weather, we can just do the ceremony, um, at the Seamy Center. Um, she said she'd help it anyway if that comes down to it. So we have plenty of parking too, I like that, you know, we've had other events there that can be, yeah, so I think that's a nice fallback on that, so we could have something in case it's really bad, so.
Is that a switch, because I thought I saw some information that said it was at the G A R.
Yeah, so that was a little, little premature.
Okay.
Um, but in hindsight.
So we'll put a corrected one out there in public?
It's, uh, it's already, yeah, yeah, we did it, I did this one right away.
Okay.
Uh, but, um, yeah, in, in hindsight, you know what, the Seamy Center is the place to be.
Fly check.
Yeah, absolutely, sign system, everything, it's just a nice place, again, parking, um, and access, so. But, uh, yeah, um, so we're just getting the word out, I'll, um, I'm gonna be talking this week also with, um, Sean and Kevin, as long as, um, I know they have a lot of projects going on in town, but to use their electronic boards too to put the message out. Um, you know, maybe the week of, um, but I know they do have a lot of projects going on, so.
We'll talk, talk to Seth also, and have him.
I already have, I sent it to him, and we're setting that up, and the same thing, you know, the school, we'll get it. Already got them all out of the school, talked to the big ones, getting through all the organizations.
Any questions for Don?
That was my question.
What? So it seems like regular Memorial Day festivities and we hold for Sunday?
A lot of nice stuff, right.
I don't need any, uh, there's no motion or anything else, just.
I would only say that, uh, Mr. Chair should probably let Don know that there probably won't be a chair appointed at that time, because our meeting is after Memorial Day, so that he may want to list our vice chair as a speaker, or a vice chair is so inclined to, because Don would probably automatically say the chair. We really won't have one.
When is the, uh?
Because we done reorg because there's. Of course, there's not reorg until the Tuesday after.
So you want to the beach? Okay, everyone good with that?
Yes.
All right, so you can use Andrew. As the. Here you go.
I'm done. That, yeah, that's the next step, just trying to make the actual program.
All right, thank you, Don.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
No worries.
Have a good night.
All right, so we've done some of the other stuff, we're down on social recycling. Intermunicipal, uh, agreement, I think we've done anything else? Kevin?
So, uh, this is just the, um, intermunicipal agreement we have with the S S R C Social Recycling Coalition. Um, it's celebrating its twenty-fifth year this Tuesday. Um, so it's been extremely helpful for the town, um, do a lot of good work, I'm, I'm actually the chair of it, so I hope we get it passed, so, uh, I don't have to listen and agree from the back for the next meeting. Answer any questions, what, what's done, they help sponsor the household disaster waste days, as well as to keep us in line with all rules and regulations.
Is that the rule that was in here, or the?
Yeah, yeah, Claire, uh, Claire Selmokowski.
So it's just signing the agreement?
Yep.
And.
Same agreement, pretty much, we've been doing for twenty-five years, and, uh, it's been reviewed by, um, Kevin's right there also, I don't see anything major.
So it's for another five years?
Yes.
And what's our, what's our commitment, any commitment?
Uh, so I guess the dues for the committee, I think it's like forty-eight hundred dollars a year, and that gets us involved with the, uh, household disaster waste days, as well as we get credits with the D P for return grants. Um, that we get to use, uh, for purchasing equipment at the transfer station, like dumpsters and, um, move cans and signs and anything else.
Any questions, Kevin? Okay, with the five-year renewal? All right, can I move?
Move to approve this South Shore Recycling Cooperative intermunicipal agreement as presented for another five years.
Okay.
Second one is current, Jimmy, did you have any? Nope, all right, or further comments? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any unanimous?
Thank you very much.
Can you keep getting? Um, the, um, Google collective bargaining has been postponed to a, a future meeting, and now we have the fiscal year twenty-five budget calendar.
Jim, was this a wait?
Nancy, are you torturing me?
No. How can you know, like, craft this three days after time, you know? Just how fast our schedule now works, so we don't. For you to do that, I think the first one is the fiscal twenty-five budget calendar. Um, it will be amended once the board votes its twenty-twenty-four dates if there needs to be any changes. Um, but this is just so, um, we can give departments a heads up. Also, for those departments that have hearings, like, through zoning things, that they can start planning their calendars. And for booking of rooms. Now with the hybrid and the Zoom extensions, there are some committees who want to use hybrid, we only have three rooms, so it's a lot of competition, so which means as soon as you take your vote, I'm gonna be booking the rooms.
Everybody have any questions?
You cried.
I got the issue, like, what? Okay, I even packed the box in Tom Weeden again.
All right, anybody have any questions on Nancy's calendar?
Yeah, I was just crying.
Okay. So. Great beginning to it, I'm sure there'll be tweaks here and now along the way, but love to see your organization.
Capital plan will go out in less than thirty months.
Right.
Welcome to my life, I'm always in three years.
All right, if there's no questions for Nancy, can I have a motion?
Move to approve the F Y twenty-five budget calendar, which is subject to change once the select board sets its meeting dates for the calendar year twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
Second one is Campfield, any further discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any unanimous? All right, now we're gonna set the date for the fall special time meeting.
Yay.
Nancy.
Do you mock me because you looked at the, um, attachment you have because of the timelines and the charter and the general bylaws? If we use September, you have to open the warrant in June, if we use October, you have to war, open the warrant in July. If we use, uh, November, you have to open the warrant in early, uh, August. So the moderator can do any of the three dates, there is no pressure as there was last year because of the, uh, water treatment plant. And I'm recommending to you the October date.
No holidays really around that?
No, it's, um, the holiday is October ninth.
So, uh, Monday, October sixteenth?
It's early. There's no.
Yosha Shana, no, Yom Kippur. And you have to look on the day before.
A lot of it is.
Because you work up the day.
Not the sixteenth.
It just seems early to me for folks to get work done. Uh, I always think September's a really tough month because back to school and, I, you know, so many of our volunteers are uh, parents as well. Is there a reason why you want it that early, Nancy?
Uh, two thousand twenty-one was October twelfth.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, that's twenty-one, right?
Usually October unless there's some.
I always remember being November.
Issue.
Yeah, the one in November.
What?
It should be one in November sometime, but we were kind of pushing the, pushing the deadlines, you know, pay for our government taxes.
Oh, wasn't that because of purchase?
I don't know, but. Delay you go, the wallwork is for Nancy, the financial staff to get the tax rates in, so it's kind of a balance then.
According to the Jewish calendar, the sixteenth is, and I'm going to destroy this, and I apologize to everyone who knows, correct pronunciation, is Rosh Todesh.
Rosh Shana, yeah.
No, Rosh Todesh, which is head of the month. It's a minor holiday.
Well, that's not the one that's the week.
No, it's not Rosh Shana or.
We, we care about Rosh Shana and, you know.
Or which is October.
Right.
September.
And my apologies for, and September was until October. Columbus Day.
It's World Bosses Day. World Food Day, Global Cat Day, National Bosses Day.
Oh, oh, it's Global Cat Day, I'm sorry, we can't have, sorry, we can't have that day. Does that mean we get to print cats?
It's the Harvest Store Day, so you can go to the Harvest Store, buy yourself a new cat.
October was pretty easy, actually.
All right, can I have a motion?
Move this select board vote to set a date for potential fall special time meeting of October sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Second one is Campfield, further discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 It's also World Spy Day, so there we go, you'd be sitting in those chairs.
I want credit for picking Gold Cat Day for our town.
Look at us, we're back on time. All right. Discussion vote suspension of COVID-nineteen state of emergency for the town of Situate, yeah.
As it says, we back out the state will have the state of emergency on May eleventh, which is two days from now, the federal government is already lifting their state of emergency. Healthcare facilities in Massachusetts will be lifting their mask mandates this week, so. President said it, the governor said it, it's now all set, COVID plus is now officially over, there's no reason for the board to keep the state of emergency in place for COVID.
Any questions? On motion?
Move to suspend the COVID-nineteen state of emergency for the town of Situate.
Second.
Second by Mr. Glidrich, further discussion?
Oh.
See none, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, any unanimous? All right, my last meeting, I took this out of a seat.
Yeah.
Let's do it again.
To clarify, Jim, so to clarify, did the legislature, who decided they're going to continue with the hybrid meeting?
That's been done by the legislature, it's not gonna go.
All right, so we're, that part of COVID is not over yet.
It's no longer part of COVID, they just extended those COVID policies past COVID.
So they decide what we're really gonna do?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know why they can't just decide to make hybrid meetings permanent and.
If you so choose.
Yeah, it's, you know, but they keep extending.
It's, it's expensive for small towns, but we're able to manage it.
Right, but it's not required, it's just allowed.
Right.
So, why they just say.
So they're not saying all meetings must be, no.
No, it's just, it's just allowed to do it, but they, they push up against the deadline.
Yeah.
So we're trying to schedule meetings like, well, it, it ends in five days, we're trying to schedule a meeting two weeks from now. We do hybrid, we don't know, it, it's just, I don't know why they just don't say, hey, you can hybrid meetings, allow them now.
But what people need to understand is that we can't always do hybrid meetings because we don't have the technology and enough spaces to do it. There's three rooms where we can have hybrid meetings, and I mean, because people are getting confused even in committees about can I, can we do Zoom meetings only?
Yeah, you're, you're allowed to do with all meetings, yeah, it's just we don't have the staff and the availability to do it. In some meetings, conservation planning, where you're trying to look at plants, don't. Conservation planning, where you're trying to look at plants, don't really lend themselves to them.
I know, but we've got some smaller committees that would like to do Zoom meetings.
Yes, you can still have those type of meetings, they're allowed.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I know the advisor won't look back and forth, they listen to what you think, hide a meeting, they.
Alright, new business, we have some one day licenses to give, can I have a motion?
Move to approve a one day wine and malt license to something good catering for private event at the Citrus Harbor Community Building on Friday, May nineteenth. Twenty twenty three, from six P M to ten P M. And further move to approve a one day wine and malt license to Malavias Fish Market for private event at the business Saturday, May twentieth, twenty twenty three, from seven P M to ten P M. And further move.
Eleven.
I'm sorry.
Well, mine says eleven, did you say that?
From seven P M to eleven P M. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I rushed. And further move to approve a one day wine and malt license to Superior Service for event at the Citrus Maritime Center on Saturday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty three. From eleven thirty A M to two thirty P M.
Second.
Second one, Miss Karen, any further discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and unanimous. And we need approval for, um, motion to approve six blank one day wine and malt licenses for emergency purposes.
Uh huh.
Second by?
Second.
Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and unanimous. Um, we also have a discussion vote for a new drain layers license.
Vote to approve the new drain layers license for Ron, um, Ivan doing business as Tri County Excavating.
Second by Ms. Comey, further discussion, see none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, five to zero. Any leads on your votes this evening? Eric?
Which one?
You.
Thank you. I just wanna let everyone know that the Cole Park Way, the development committee, um, with the able assistants, uh, in invaluable assistants of Corey Miles. And um, Kevin Cafferty, uh, we've actually got an R F P that we're about to send out to uh, engage design engineering firms. To tell us what some possible solutions to that situation down there is. So hopefully that will help with the next one. Uh, Kevin Cafferty was able to get us a a very good drone operator to potentially go down, save us some money, do a drone. Uh, 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 site visit, whatever you wanna call it, uh, so that we've got some information to attach to the R F P. And make it easier for engineering companies to uh, respond. So hopefully we'll be getting some news, that that uh, project was funded through a federal grant, uh, R P money. So that's moving along, and this is not a liaison report, but I thought we should mention the fact that Jim and I were at. A firefighter training, uh, session about the even and half ago or so.
Yeah.
Very, very impressive, um, there are people, is it from the International Firefighters Association?
The National Association of Firefighters.
Yeah, and um, they have about five or six instructors that they send out, one guy is from Canada, another was from California. They were from all over the place, and they conduct training for firefighters on how they can escape from bad situations. And the whole idea is that the trainers get trained, and then they come back and they train other people in the department, and it was very impressive, they bring all kinds of equipment. That apparently we now as a, as a cooperative now own this equipment, and we can use it, um, for our firefighters. There were, what, three, four other towns involved?
Yeah, there was a great situation in Su, uh, Mossfield, with a training trailer and the training, uh, this will pitch into the ledger if you saw. So the trailer and all the training implements inside now belong to Mossfield and Situate, it'll be stationed here in Situate. Um, we train members of our department, members of their department. Again, it's firefighter safety, how to get out of a burning building, what to do if you're entangled in wires. Uh, they go through all the strain, and then in the end, they put the firefighter in the basement of the big hall of Mossfield Fair. With no lights, lights flashing, radios going off, blacked out, completely disorientated, and they have to use what they've learned over the last couple of days. To find their way out of that building, or pass the car, so it was, it was pretty interesting, pretty intense, and um, Jeff Simpson from Mossfield did a lot of the work on the grant, but. We now have that trail, so we'll be able to train our firefighters, and we'll be able to train, um, firefighters from the here.
Very impressive, very impressive people doing the training.
Awesome. You have a reason?
Just quick, um, I don't have the date, I don't know if Lorraine knows, the the library outdoor space, the the little reflection. Um, garden is finished, and there, it did schedule a ribbon cutting, but I have, I I couldn't get that date before, so that's coming up soon, so stay tuned. But that's, you can go out there and enjoy it now, it's beautiful. Um, and then, um. This was a, this is actually a question for Jim, the Chamber and E B C both, uh, were discussing, um. Signage to the harbor, I mean, I don't know how we're gonna process this, to the harbor masters, I know, I know, but it's, if that's our public restroom in the harbor. Let me step back, everybody, they're concerned that there is no public, there's not readily readily available public bathrooms in the harbor. And that they were told that, oh, well, the harbor master, basically, like, could add signage there. So we can talk about that later, but that was something that came up as something that really, um, they hear over and over and over again about folks visiting into it, so. That's all I have. Well, that that was one of the charges for Cole Parker.
Yes, to incorporate that, but right now.
Just, the right now, the solution is, whether they're portable, whether they're not, whatever they are, and to to engineer it into the whatever, it's a real name, yeah, for visitors, yeah.
Yes, it's a real name.
Hundred forty five ring barrels, water resources, uh, helps move, that's gonna be seventy five thousand gallons saved. After using about five times per year.
Did they sell out?
They sold, that's how many sold, a hundred, I have a hundred and forty five, which is fabulous, and also beautification, fabulous, Shipshape Day, but also those committees wanted it to be sent. And great, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
We call out Shipshape Day, I'm gonna get everybody to sit and eat tonight, but.
Yes.
Unnecessarily, um.
Thank you to everybody who contributed, I'm sure you don't have the numbers yet, um, but, uh, lots of trash bags out there around town, it's great, so thank you to everybody that's in part. You know, I pulled up a lot of mustard meat myself, it's very fun, um, but that stuff is rented. Um.
And it was a beautiful day.
Oh, yeah, gorgeous, yeah, good day, and hopes.
They were still, they were still picking up today, so.
Oh, I can imagine, yes.
So it's a couple days, so it's a final, uh, what time?
I I just had, you know, if you have an opportunity, um, when it's ready, you know, the new pier looks great, walked back the other night, um, with Waterway, so it's beautiful. Um, so I think I'll go, should be mostly happy, it's beautiful, those that are in the different configuration for them to get used to, but it's gorgeous. So really nice job, something to be really proud of, um, and Jim and myself and Kevin are meeting with, uh, Citrus Boatworks tomorrow. Um, to kinda talk through the management of the parking lot, they concern to. Citrus Folk Works, people that go into the Maritime Center, uh, just Waterways here on that. Actually, they're considering it tomorrow, and they're.
This time, sure.
To talk about that.
Now, I understand that the Beach Commission is, has a meeting, the twelfth, I think, um, to go over their signs. And they'll be coming before you guys afterwards, we'll say, um, finalize that, I know there's one concern with Zeean Beach. And whether that's actually public or private, I don't know all the details of it, um, but I know that the residents there.
There's no, yeah.
I think there is.
Yeah, there is.
We need to figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, what is it?
It's public, up to a certain point, I'm sure that once you get closer to the houses. But we went through this last year or two years ago, when we made everyone move on their.
Cynics.
Cynics and everything, and the uh, conservation commission, I believe, planted grass up there.
Mm-hmm.
And so I don't think there's any dispute, I think the dispute may be somewhat of a border issue, you know, well, here it's public, and then just like on Peggy Beach.
Right, so the residents there just wanna make sure that wherever the sign is, it's directing them towards the public portion, not the.
But. Public park. That makes sense.
Private portion. So, you guys will be dealing with that, I think she's coming at the next meeting. Um, that's all I have, for residents.
I did one quick other thing, the board had talked about, um, a different type of nicer trailer type toilet down at Caesar Beach.
Yeah.
Uh, Nancy's reached out to one company for a quote, we, I think we're back there.
Yeah, we should have given this one, it's not heard of.
So, to do something there, and uh, we also found a company that made, uh, basically prefab self cleaning. Type of bathrooms that would maybe be a perfect fit down at, uh, the Pier Forty Four Park.
Yeah.
So, and I sent the link to Karen Conley and the Andy, so, um. Both Nancy and I spent a whole day looking at portable toilets, it was tremendously exciting. But we have forgotten what we are working on.
Well, and of course, the other part of that is, is that at certain times of year, if there, if you don't get self cleaning. At certain times of year, you just have to have more cleanings per week than you might at other times, so.
Yeah, that'll be the big discussion on the the portable trailer, uh, because the portable ones get cleaned daily.
Yes. Right.
Trailer at the golf course was cleaned once a week, and that was two hundred fifty dollars of cleaning. So I think we've said three times, and we'll see what it looks like, uh, in terms of a quote, but that that'll be the big issue for the the trailer.
Right.
Any correspondence?
Yep, we have one, uh, invitation to the Citrus High School graduation, Friday, June second, at six P M, twenty twenty three. Let Michelle or Lorraine go with you, if you attend, I am, so, um, I'll go, and uh, what else?
I'm supporting.
Great time.
May I add something, um, I didn't think it was Jermaine to bring it up at the, um, galley, but I think we all saw the pictures.
Oh, I meant to bring it up, actually, yeah.
Of the back of that, I mean, I don't know when those pictures were taken.
They're taking this morning, post afternoon, okay, man.
It's probably from all the construction and all the stuff being delivered.
It's disgraceful.
And then, when you sent it to me this morning, or Michelle sent it to me?
Well, it just wasn't clear, it wasn't marked on the photographs, so, you know, I don't know when, and all I'm saying is, it is, it is happening. It shouldn't be, and the building inspection should at least be done there, if they have a building permit, which I assume they do. They must have to have some sort of plan for disposal of rubbish and construction materials, I think that's very big.
Yeah, I sent, I sent to Brian, um, and Brian texted me back that it'd be cleaned up once this morning, and then they came back and it took it all away again, so it's all done. Um, there was no food, it was boxes and stuff like that from the localies, but, but he got my email, he he got it off, and so, he sent me pictures of what he was sitting.
Yeah, like I said, I didn't think it was Jermaine to the discussion about the seating, but I certainly, as a citizen here, wasn't happy to see that.
Uh, they're down fifteen with two minutes to go.
Oh, jeez.
They're gonna lose.
Uh-oh.
Um, alright, can I have a motion to approve minutes? I'd like.
To accept the minutes for a select board and school committee joint meeting held on April twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, and a select board meeting held on April twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, second.
Second one, Miss Comey, for discussions, see none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. That being said, I have a motion to adjourn and sign documents.
Some of them.
Second one, Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Alright.
Aye. Aye, it is unanimous, five zero. Situate, it's been an honor, but, uh, serving, uh. It's been an honor.
Not always a pleasure, sometimes.
Both of us, it's been a pleasure, uh, and an honor to serve you guys for the last fifteen years, so, signing off, good night.
Thank you, Tony.